Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to call this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order. We're going to call the roll and we're going to acknowledge that our colleague Siri Pulapati is joining us from Hyderabad in Talangana in India. So Stacy.
Yes, let's see, we have Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Siri, you are officially our first international meeting.
Yeah, she's listed on the agenda with everything. That's cool.
Stacy, would you read all of the legal announcements, please?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Friday, March 24th at 6:00 PM and Sunday, March 26th at 6:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to invite you to rise. We're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation tonight will be by Jeff Coons with River City Christian. And Daryl Langwell, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, thank you.
Pleasure. Yes, if you would bow in a word of prayer with me. Father God, we just thank you so much for the privilege that it is to come and to participate in the public arena. And we thank you, God, for the privilege it is to be able to assist and work for the people of Rancho Cordova. So God, we just pray tonight you would pour out a blessing upon our families, pour out a blessing upon our single people, all those, God, that represent Rancho Cordova. God, we just would, we just ask, God, that your favor would be upon us and we just pray as we look to try to follow you and honor you, God, that you would just continue to move us forward as a city and as a community and looking after one another, encouraging one another and motivating one another. God, we thank you for our leaders that are represented here tonight. God, give them discernment, give them just wisdom as they work together and, God, as they attempt to make a difference with their lives for this community. And God, we just also ask that you would just move us forward into the future. We recognize that you're at work all around us all the time. God, you are doing a great work and give us just eyes to see and ears to hear and hands and feet that will go and join you in the work that you're doing. And as we do that, God, we recognize that, that you just have a plan and a purpose, not only for us as individuals, but for us as a community. And so we just give this night to you as well and we just pray that your blessing would be upon this meeting. And we just give it all to you in our Lord and Savior's name. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. Please be seated, everyone. So tonight, we do not have any presentations, so we will move into public comment. And let's remember, please, that everyone wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda tonight are offered an opportunity to do so at this point. Everyone will have three minutes and there is a timer up here to remind you about the three minutes. If you really, if you do have an item that's on the agenda, then we will have an opportunity with each agenda item to speak to that item. And remember also, please, that under the provisions of the government code, we don't have the ability to take any action on an item that you bring to us tonight. However, if it's something that can be addressed by staff, we will be happy to make that contact for you. If it's something that needs further discussion, then you could certainly talk to the city manager about putting an item on the agenda for another meeting. So Stacy, do we have anybody who is signed up to speak in public comment?
Yes, we will start with a public comment with those that are in the council chambers and then I will go to Zoom and email. James Garcia, you'll be first. Following James will be Marilyn Metzger.
James, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm James Garcia, a Stone Creek resident. I know you are used to seeing me speak at these meetings. Usually I focus on issues or concerns related to an action before the city council. Tonight, I appear before you with a different message. I am representing the Stone Creek residents for Smart Growth. While this group has expressed concerns around the Logistics Center project, we also recognize our responsibility to provide positive feedback for a job well done. The vote on March 6th demonstrated to us a majority voice of support for community values, even in the face of historical actions and relationships. We understand the likelihood that your vote may end up in an adverse legal action against the city. At our core, we are aware this was a difficult decision for you and recognize the courage it takes to lead change on behalf of the residents. For that, we want to thank you and let you know this means more to us than just a single vote. It illustrates to us a moment in time where our voices were heard, understood, embraced, and publicly acted upon. Special thanks to Garrett Gatewood, Siri Pulapati, and David Sanders for the courage to take action to stop the impending health threats to our residents and especially our children and following the design guidelines. We appreciate your investment in our families, community, and the city. You have shown the residents that you share our vision of what we hope Rancho Cordova will become as the city grows. I want to apologize now if I butcher my fellow residents' names as I read them off. Please stand up. This was signed by the following: Jerry Abengana, Periot Agana, Hollis Alstrom, Scott Alstrom, Murnesh Ansari, Pat Becker, Mark Barry, George Bradley, Lisa Burns, David Burns, Paul Carroll, Kate Carroll, Jenna Contreras, Max Corales, Susan Corales, Don Davison, Annie Deister, Keith Deister, Sandra Dainong, John Diet, Troy Fennel, David Ferguson, Vera Ferguson, Pamela Fuller, Daryl Fuller, Kristen Fuller, James Garcia, Jennifer Garcia, Benny Glover, Pat Glover, Dennis Gottfried, Frank Hall, Valerie Knippschild, Jonathan Lacoste, Nancy Lacoste, Sarah Malone, Donald Maynardo, Annalisa Maynardo, Marilyn Metzger, Mary Miller, Phil Miller, Amir Mohamid Diado, Sean Eyes, Mohamed Idadal, Greg Mylenberg, Sharon Mylenberg, Sandra Murphy, Daip Naiyak, Sandra Opale, Pete Phillips, Rich Picker, Esteban Ramirez, Ben Ramirez, Rowena Ramirez, Inek Rose, Sayon Ristemi, Ivory Rubin, Kim Schuster, Eileen Saidelko, Chitra Shinboy, Pixie Tha Singa, Janet Techmeyer, Tracy Thaler, Rene Weber, Donald Wyman, Alina Wildman, Eric Weiniger, Robin Weiniger, Selena Wong, along with over 200-plus that may not have been able to respond in time, but we want to thank you.
Thank you, James, and everyone. Marilyn?
Following Marilyn will be Troy Fennel.
Hi, too. I'm speaking for myself, Marilyn Metzger. Hello. I have a smile on today. I'm speaking for myself and some neighbors who live adjacent to me, many who are veterans. We want to thank Garrett and Siri and David for bringing light into what felt like living in the dark shadows of impending warehouses for the last year. Thank you for putting community over commerce, for allowing our voices not just to be heard but acted upon, for going beyond your words of empathy to the courage to adamantly call out for change. Thank you for the privilege of witnessing the moment in time that we hope will be the changing tide of developer entitlement and intrusion to a plan that better protects the future direction of all of Rancho Cordova. And thank you for the greatest blessing of this journey, the new friendships formed by the joining of hearts, minds, talent, and professions with the unified goal of protecting our homes, health, and quality of life. We will never be the same as our lives have been permanently woven together over the past year in the endeavor that we faced and in so many other ways. We are not just members of Stone Creek residents for Smart Growth. We are now friends who are invested in each other's lives. I am grateful for your service on the council and for voting for a well-balanced future for Rancho Cordova. And hopefully, one day, it'll be a unanimous vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marilyn. Troy?
Good evening. I'm Troy Fennel, resident of Stone Creek. And I, too, would like to offer my appreciation and gratitude for the display on the last time and the delay. I would like to encourage you to stay courageous in this battle. It's not going to be easy. When we look back over COVID, we saw a huge boom in Amazon and internet shipping sales, which has caused all of these warehouse industries to spring up overnight. Unfortunately, the state of California has not been able to promulgate regulations in a manner that has caught up with the builder's desire to build these huge warehouses. We haven't had an opportunity to get the studies necessary, but if you look, many, many residential areas, many cities are now speaking out against these logistics center warehouses. Fairfield, Tracy, Eldorado Hills, Roseville, numerous cities down in Southern California are all trying to put a pause on these building projects, all for the same reasons: pollution, all light, sound, noise, and air quality, distances to parks and residential areas. Unfortunately, a few of the residential areas in Southern California have already suffered from the lack of these, and their cities have been overrun. Their traffic problems are out of control, and there is no way to stop what has now become warehouse centrals for many of these residential areas. So again, for the citizens, we appreciate your pause and we ask that you would still be courageous and looking forward in these and partner with some of these other cities. And let's speak as a unified state and figure out what is the best way to move forward so it's not causing detrimental harm to the citizens and yet we're still allowing commerce, construction, and the jobs to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Troy. Anybody else?
I have a hand raised in Zoom. Eric Weiniger. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Eric?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Eric Weiniger, Stone Creek homeowner. A term used for one's framework or worldview is a paradigm. A person or group's paradigm designates the window through which they will view the world they live and work in. There seem to be two paradigms in play here in my perception for Rancho Cordova. The status quo, often translated as "business-friendly," and one that we espouse, our group, that is balanced between business interests and community interests. The business-friendly interest seems to value the wants of business over the wants and needs of the community, which is why we are in the current situation. A key example of overlooking community input in favor of business is the 1998 EIR that was finalized on January 16th, 1998. The figure in your packet shows an aerial photo of the area from August 1998, and you can see there are no residents, just old mining areas. There were zero residents in the area with no roads yet existing. The community has been beaten over the head with statements to the effect of, "You could have objected to things back then. Really?" Quoting the CEQA regulation, its purpose is to, quote, "provide public agencies and the public in general with detailed information about the effect a proposed project is likely to have on the environment." Unquote. How was that supposed to happen when there were no residents existing at the time? And how was the community supposed to be informed during these special pandemic times, which is what happened with GLP Bold Beauty? Second figure in my presentation shows the notification area that was used to inform residents of the proposed Bold Beauty project. The list of residents notified was just 27, less than 2% of the Stone Creek community. The hearing was held on March 20th, 2020, two days after California issued its stay-at-home order. This was pre-Zoom and we were prohibited from attending in person. The video of that meeting shows zero public attendees. This project was classified as CEQA-exempt, originating from that 1998 EIR that was developed with zero community input. So in both instances, there was zero input. How does that conform with the stated purpose of CEQA? It may be the letter of the law, but it's not the spirit of the CEQA law. However, there are signs of a paradigm shift. The term paradigm shift was coined after the changes in key worldviews from the revolution in physics in the early 20th century, when Einstein's and others' conception of the universe replaced Newton's classic view. A paradigm shift signifies a new view of the world. So we have seen evidence of the paradigm shift in the vote two weeks ago, in which a new view of, quote, "Let's think about other ways of doing things," prevailed by listening to overwhelming feedback of the community that they are concerned about health and other effects by warehouses being built too close to homes and schools. Therefore, as with the others who have spoken before me, we thank you for viewing our little world in a different and better way.
Your time is up.
A shift from the status quo to community focus. By asking the developers to consider us other modes of thinking, you support a balance of interests. So again, we thank you for that enlightened thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else?
There's no additional public comment. However, I do need to acknowledge those that submitted an email.
Good point.
So the emails that the City Clerk's Office has received, we have placed these on the website. They're also in a binder in the back of the council chambers. We received public comment from Valerie Knippschild, Sarah Malone, MJ Tornay, Lisa and David Burns, David and Barbara Williams, Angel Ball, Mark Barry, Lisa Phoenix, Eric Weiniger, Marilyn Metzger, and James Garcia.
And that's it?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to council reports. And we'll start with Donald.
I'll start with this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend what was the Local Government Commission Conference and is now called Civic Well. They moved it from Yosemite, which, lucky for them, they planned ahead and there was construction at the conference space that they were going to be at, so they weren't going to be in Yosemite, and Yosemite wasn't even open. But it was a really great conference, mainly focused on clean energy and a handful of other interesting topics around clean air. Dr. Ayala from the Sacramento Air District spoke. One of the fascinating things that they were able to show in some studies was across the world during the initial shelter-in-place orders that were put in place because of COVID, they were able to quantify how much cleaner the air got. But the interesting thing is now looking at what it would take to get that amount of pollution out of, out of the world, basically, or out of these communities, and what's the public's willing to do that, whether it's fleet replacement and a whole bunch of other things. And one of the other things that they were looking at was for distance learning. There was an entire session on distance learning. And right now, about half of Allstate workers are still remote working, but they haven't stopped driving and moving around. And so even with the lack of commute, there's, the vast majority of people that are doing distance work or remote working are still using their car nearly as much as they would even if they weren't commuting. There's some really fascinating things that they were covering. I also did get to attend the civic engagement sessions for the South by Southwest Conference. It was presented in parallel with the Civic IO, US Conference of Mayors. So there was a bunch of different workshops and sessions around homeownership and there was a lot of, again, a lot of stuff around clean energy and green energy. One of the things that I think over both of the conferences that seemed to be a huge conversation point that, I don't know how much it's going to affect Sacramento, but there's been a lot of talk about offshore wind production, especially in the Humboldt, Southern Oregon area, which I guess is the second most windy place in the US. And even at South by, the second, the second place is New Jersey, both of which are looking at placing huge turbines. And if you go look at the ones that are in Fairfield and over in Tracy and things like that, they're talking about ones 10 times that size, ones that they will have to construct near the coast and take out on boats. They won't, they won't even fit on trains or trucks or anything. And they're actually going to float these things off of the coast 10 miles out so nobody can see them. And evidently, it is, if you take the average solar panels, about 25% efficient as far as the amount of time during a year that it's actually producing energy is about 25% of the time. This offshore wind will be actually 65%. So some really interesting things happening. I would also say a lot of talk around energy storage at the home, within the grid. I know one conversation that I had was those Tesla battery walls that everybody keeps talking about, cost about 20 grand, but the technology exists today to run your house off of an electric car. And the F1, the new F-150 electric has four times the battery capacity of the Tesla battery wall. And if you bought four of the battery walls, you'd spend 80 grand, and I hear the F-150 starts at 40,000. But I'm getting on the list first for one. And the rest of you can buy one. But some really interesting conversations in the last week or so. So that's, that's all for me. Air District is next week. STA is next week. So nothing else to report.
That's cool. They've been doing that offshore wind generation for over a decade in Japan. It's one of the things we saw when we toured Totori Prefecture.
The scale of which, though, what they're talking about that they're going to do, it's actually interesting. There's three different ways that they're thinking about constructing them, but only one of them actually has ever been built. The other two, they would be partially submerged so that they don't get interrupted by the waves and the currents or whatever. But one of them is literally floating it 10 feet under the water and then having cable stays all the way to the ground. But no one's ever built that, so it's completely conceptual. But they were showing it as if, here's the three different ways we're going to do it.
Because it literally makes no sense.
It was, it was pretty fascinating to look, to, and to think that they would have these operational in less than seven years.
Yeah.
Yet it's completely conceptual, building two of the three techniques. The only technique that exists is to drill a hole and build a pier all the way up to the surface and put this thing on top of it. But again, it's Humboldt, and they're going to have to construct it on-site, basically, at the coast and take it off on a boat. I've been to that port. I don't know where you're going to build these, so.
Sounds like jobs.
We need a lot of people to move to Humboldt.
Sounds like jobs.
And a pretty remote part of the, oh, and they still don't know how they're going to connect it to the grid in places that actually need that power, like the Bay Area and other places. So again, all conceptual, should be operational in seven years.
That's what the Pacific Inn attaches for.
I think they said that about the bullet train 30 years ago, too.
It might be. Garrett?
All right. Thank you for everybody showing up today. It's great hearing from all my constituents. I also went through the Civic Well policy because I'm always interested in environment. I learned a long time ago, I think it was Steve Hansen, who was a council member in Sacramento, was, is really big on environmentalism. And so he grabbed me and he was like, hey, come to this, you're going to learn some stuff. And so he's like, what I learned is that everyone needs to switch to electric ovens. And then he was, and I was like, okay, so that's the policy we need to admit. And then he was like, no, no, Garrett. He's like, you need to think about that. He's like, do we even have the power on the grid for that? Do we even have the power? You can't just run with a crazy idea that comes out of this group. You got to think about all the, the interesting nuances that come with this idea. He's like, yes, this would be amazing. Yes, it would save on fossil fuels, but look at all the other stuff he does. And how do we even generate electricity? So I always find these eye openings, especially when I'm sitting next to an older politician who I'm excited to try the idea. He's like, no, no, slow down. Let's think about it. But I'm glad you're thinking about options because who doesn't want greener, easier air to breathe and whatnot? And I did talk to the head of the Air District, and he's really concerned about warehousing and what that would do in the community and the air quality. He thinks that his, and it was very interesting listening to him talk because he did something. He's like, here's what's happened. Because of COVID, they said eventually warehouses of these sizes were going to be all over the different communities, but what's happened that due to COVID, it took something that was supposed to take 30 years and it's trying to crunch it into like three years. And so everyone's starting to feel this big pull as they would have had to set these up eventually for e-commerce, but they're trying to shove it into a smaller amount. And so there's just not the studies and he's really concerned about the particulates that they didn't even have back then. So it's interesting talking to the Air District. Met with Region Business, they are really set on the fact that the region, Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, Folsom, Citrus Heights, those areas need to come up. And you guys are going to be hearing a lot about, it's called the doughnut. And it's where the community around Sacramento picks up and does amazing things, which hopefully pulls up Sacramento at the same time. And what they really would like to see is they're set, dead set on putting amenities into the city of Rancho Cordova. So like a bowling alley, a movie theater, like something that allows Rancho Cordovans not to have to drive and could have these cool amenities because not a lot of people are going into downtown SAC anymore, and a lot of people want to stay in their areas to do stuff. And so they would love if Rancho Cordova could do that. So be surprised if Region Business isn't engaged in the community, trying to get us the amenities that we want. So more soccer fields, cooler, like a, another restaurant, like maybe two, maybe three, some sort of nightlife that we have, because those are the next big things. And the last thing, I met with Steve Hansen from The Connector. He's helping out with that. And if you guys want to think about it, as we get more electrified, the back freeway that is, that is our connector is, it reminds me of when people built a giant road out in Rockland and Roseville and no one knew what the heck they were doing, but then the community just popped up over it. And so it was smart of those council members to push that through. So we're going to have a long talk about it as a community because I think this back-end road could be the way to take, you know, the stress off of Sunrise Boulevard so the traffic doesn't get that bad. It's honestly, as we build the next phase of Rancho Cordova, which touches that road, and plus, it is super dangerous on that road. We have so many accidents when we really look at it, and we just need to tighten that up as a community and be that next freeway because that's the big way, especially once we get our airport back. Between Folsom, Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, that back road is the best way to connect the cities together. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. David?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of stuff, so I'll try to be brisk here. I chair Regional SAN. We have started a committee on infill and trying to deal with infill fees. The challenge all of us have, every jurisdiction has a Folsom Boulevard-like place where you would love to be able to do a lot of development and infill, but often it's the fees that all the utilities charge to fix the old and then upgrade it to the new standard that is the real barrier to getting stuff done. So it's far more expensive to build in an old commercial corridor than it is in a brand-new developed area. And so that's why we tend to leave these neighborhoods behind. And Regional SAN is working with SECA. We're going to, we're going to try to take steps to get all of our utilities working together in the same direction to make those infill projects more economically successful. Track Club, I just wanted to tell you guys, down at the track last week, there were over 100 kids running around doing youth track, which is a very large number. Almost, for track, that's almost an manageable number. So the number of coaches that the Track Club has is going to have to double. But at the same time, you just had high school athletes leave the stadium, so you have them leaving the stadium, you have 100 youth kids rushing into the stadium, plus you got another 100 kids down there playing spring football. So as you just sort of stand there and observe this, you see all of this youth athletic activity going on. It is a wonderful thing for our community. And I can tell you, it's not just the normal Rancho Cordovans who are there. There are some, a handful of kids from Folsom. There are quite a few kids from like the Rosemont area, all the way from the southernmost part of Rancho Cordova up to, you know, Fair Oaks, Gold River, and of course, a ton from regular Rancho Cordova. So it is really quite a regional event that's going on there athletically, and it's exciting to see. I was at the GSAC Board last week. I heard a lot about Rancho Cordova at that board meeting. This is the Regional Economic Development Group. They are very excited about They are very excited about their success in bringing Solodyne to Ranch of Cordova and of course are part of that. So that is, that is all the talk among the economic development gurus in the regions. That was pretty exciting. I got to review a couple of All-America City proposals last week. I can't really divulge what's in them, but by the time they get to their competition point, there's a couple, you know, as a reviewer that I'm going to want to share with you guys. They're doing amazing things with economic development and getting kids from the high school level to do, to good jobs in the community, particularly in a challenged situation. This is very, I think we could replicate this in Ranch of Cordova. So in a few months, remind me, we'll be talking about, we'll be talking about some options there. I attended the American River Grange Crab Feed, which was a great, a great event. It's kind of a smaller building, the American River Grange. It's not a vast expanse like St. John Vianney or another big place to have a crab feed, but it's fun. Is that our oldest building, Lynda? The Grange is our oldest? It's older than Ruchere Station?
That I'm not sure about.
It's one of those two that must be the oldest.
One of the two. Yeah, 1884, something like that.
Something like that.
Who was the Grange Crab Feed?
Who did it? The Grange?
The Grange.
Oh.
They do it with the Boy Scouts.
I say I wasn't invited.
It's a partnership.
They're dead to me.
Well, they have a very, it's a very select attendance.
They'd love.
God, that was a dick!
And besides Garrett, they'd love to have you join.
They would. The Grange is always looking for members.
What, what, okay.
I find it fascinating that I hear that from you and not them.
Well, that was a push several years ago, but they've been working, they've been working on upgrading the building.
And they've done a great job.
And they've done a superb job.
And Cordova High is now doing some end of season, like the end of season soccer banquet was at the Grange Hall.
Wonderful.
Perfect, really wonderful thing. Reuse old, old starches because we don't have many of them. We gotta, we gotta keep them all in hand. Let's see, Lynda and I attended the Sacramento Placerville JPA. That's the rail line that extends from downtown Sacramento all the way up to Placerville. We have a bunch of new board members there, so we sort of had to remind them about what this is about. That was, that was an interesting discussion. There's a lot of trail opportunity connecting Ranch of Cordova and Sacramento all the way to Placerville, all the way to South Lake Tahoe by different trail schemes that are in the works. I'm an Acadaca coach and one of my kids, a local kid here, qualified for the national competition. She did so well on the test. So we have a nationally ranked academic decathlon kid from right here in Ranch Cordova. So I'm pretty excited about that. Her competition is this weekend, so we'll see how she does.
Yes, thank you, guys. Wonderful.
We'll have to bring her here to get some accolades for that because that is a very rare thing. Let's see, I was in the Revan Tax Meeting for the League of California Cities last week and I spent a lot of time preparing for next week's National League of Cities Congressional Conference, which I am attending and I think Donald, you're attending or you're hoping to.
I'm, I'm going to be there for my committee. I think I will be in DC about a day-ish.
I'll be there about six days for my role there.
No, no, I'm, I'm coming in for the Community Development Committee on Saturday.
All right, good. Well, maybe we'll pass in the hallway.
Yeah.
And.
Which Marriott is it at? The Marquee, the, the other one?
Newish one.
The other one didn't never reopen, right?
Right, yeah, converted to something else. And finally, the end of my report, I also attended the Region's Business Retreat. That is an amazing group of business leaders in Sacramento and they are very focused on what interests us. That is economic development in jurisdictions that are well-run and are aggressively looking for economic options. And that is us, that is Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Folsom. And so that's where their focus is. And I'm, I'm relieved for that and gratified and looking forward to a great partnership, an extended partnership. We've already worked with them. That's my report.
Siri, I skipped you, I should not have, sorry.
No worries. Actually, mine is pretty short. You know, I didn't get to attend any face-to-face events in the last couple of weeks. And I'm on a very limited committees and commissions. So none of my boards met this week, so I, I don't have any new updates that I'd like to consult on.
How's the weather?
It's actually pretty good. It's not as cold, it's not raining, it's, it's good.
The grass looks really tall.
No trees are, I know, I know. I figure my mom's going to walk in any minute, so.
Thank you. Be safe. So as David said, we went to the, it's actually stands for Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor, JPA, and it has been in existence since the Southern Pacific agreed to sell the corridor to Regional Transit back in the late 90s for 14 and a half million dollars. And that was to facilitate the extension of light rail from Butterfield as far as it could go to the east, which of course today is the city of Folsom. But then there's other things that go on, on the rest of the track and other things that are planned to go on for the rest of the corridor. Hopefully, people have attended the Writing a Wrong Japanese-American and the World War II exhibit over at our Mills Station Arts and Cultural Center.
That is so awesome.
It is phenomenal.
It is, and I have to add, it's a Smithsonian exhibit.
It is a traveling Smithsonian exhibit, yes.
At the MAC, at our MAC.
Yeah. And it has been augmented by local people who've come in and said, oh, that's my aunt, that's my uncle. And somebody who brought a backpack that their auntie or somebody who had, had made while they were in camp. And it's on display along with people's, local people's memories that have been added. In the back of the room, there is this wonderful postcard that the MAC sent out. If you did not receive yours, please pick one up in the back of the room that will tell you what's going on for the rest of the year. The Regional Transit, what's called the Ad hoc Board Composition and Voting Structure Subcommittee met. And after a lot of probably unnecessary discussion, we agreed that the RT Board should be expanded to add one additional representative from the county and one additional representative for Elk Grove. And it's really based on population similar to the, similar to the membership at the Sacramento Library Authority. One of the best things I did was to attend the graduation of the Chamber of Commerce's very first M-BARC program. M-BARC is a clever word that stands for Minority Business Assistant and Recovery Kickstart. And it's a program that's funded jointly by the, well, maybe it's just funded by the city, managed by the Chamber with assistance from the Asian Pacific Chamber here in the Sacramento region. And there were about 10 graduates of this program. It went on for several weeks. They learned all sorts of things that people need to know when they go into business for themselves. Financial management, business planning, day-to-day operations, something about human assist, human resources. So some of these people were brand new to a lot of us, but some of them are very, very well-known, like Abbey Floors of Ranch of Cordova. American Mustang Parts, we have one of the very few shops that will specialize in working on your Mustang regardless of how old it is. AP Energy Solutions, this gentleman is an electrical and general construction contractor. Ari Taylor, actually a tailor here in Ranch of Cordova. Sea Tub's Detailing, which details automobiles. First Response Phone Repair. Ideas in Promotions. The Little Boot, Boota Thai Bistro, which is over at Rocking, the intersection of Rockingham and Matherfield Road. Nazar Development, Joshua does software and web development. Strad Meadery, you know, we have what, eight breweries, two distilleries and a meadery. They're over on Mercantile, you can go and enjoy their, their wares. And then SWT Window Tenting. And this is a great example because not only did they learn so much about business development and how to be successful in business and really grow and thrive, but they also made connections. So SWT Window Tenting has agreed to partner with Sea Tub's Detailing and, and you can do all of that at one time. Because we have three new representatives here in Ranch of Cordova. Roger Nilo has joined us as our representative at the legislature. And then Rich Desmond and Pat Hume have joined us as our members of the Board of Supervisors. We get two now, so we get two votes downtown at the Board of Supervisors. And we are doing tours for them to introduce them to everything they did not know about Ranch of Cordova. So we did one for Senator Nilo last week and the ones for Supervisors Desmond and Pat and Hume are coming up. Friday night, David, were you at the Community Council Awards?
Yes.
Okay.
I was there, but I arrived late.
Yeah, David and I attended the Community Council Annual Awards Dinner. All sorts of wonderful awards, things like the People We Couldn't Have Done Without and Youth Awards and Business Awards. And our very own colleague, Ken Cooley, who was here a couple of weeks ago, is now going to be the Citizen of the Year for Ranch of Cordova next, this coming year. And what it really means, it, there's really only two perks to it. And the first one is he gets to, he gets to set off the, he gets to light the Christmas tree at the annual Christmas tree lighting. Pardon?
You're, 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 you're.
It's the other way around.
Listen, right.
Okay.
That's the second.
And so, and so the other thing he gets to do is lead the parade on the Fourth of July. He gets to be the Grand Marshal. Thank you, somebody in the audience. Friday at the Community Council, we heard Ranch of Cordova's very own Sheriff Jim Cooper, who is a Cordova grad from 1982. And it was really very funny because of course difficult of the Community Council. They kept showing his graduation picture from 1982, which doesn't look anything like he does today. So you could imagine the delightful embarrassment, which was really too lovely. And finally, we're going to adjourn tonight in the memory of two lovely people who have left us. The first one is a dear lady named Marjorie Bolton. Marjorie was a teacher and a longtime resident of Ranch of Cordova. She's actually the person who wrote the very first formal history of Ranch of Cordova. It was a, it was for her master's thesis in 1969 at Sac State. And it is a book that so many of us have drawn so much from. It's been revised and a little bit updated, but, but she, she just deserves all the credit in the world. She lost her husband several years ago and now she's gone to join him. And then a wonderful firefighter named Ronnie Rom. And Ronnie, bless his heart, was one of our four drivers of the Mills One Historic Fire Truck. And Ronnie's one of the gentlemen who, one of the firefighters who helped me save the, the Mills Station building. So I'm, we'll always be indebted to Ronnie for his participation in, in that project. So that's my report and we'll turn it over to our city manager, Micah.
Actually, I need to call on Garrett because he testified in front of the legislature last week, but he didn't mention it.
So two things, thank you for calling on me. I went in front of the legislature, there was a bill to put a 500-foot buffer around schools for homeless encampments and I lost horribly. And it was actually really interesting because I was lectured by San Francisco and LA. People from them that said that I should look to them, they're the right direction. I didn't know at the time that Karen Bass, the actual mayor of LA, put a thousand-foot buffer. And if I had, I would have had a great quip, but it didn't make it out of committee. I'm hoping that they're going to put it back. A lot, it was very interesting. Just so everyone on the community knows, I got lectured that there could possibly be a homeless mother of two kids that needs to set up close to the school to get lunch, breakfast, lunch and dinner. And if we made her move, that would, that there could be a chance that she couldn't eat. And I don't know how to argue that. I was also told by the LA group that they have homeless teachers that need to be able to get to the school and so they're living in camps. And I said, what third world hell is this in LA and San Francisco? That they have these kinds of conditions. And I am mortified that the two largest economies in California can't find a hotel or motel to rent out for that. Perfect example for our community, we found a mother of five kids that was on the streets and we worked tirelessly to find her a home for her kids and help her get back on. That's the kind of city that you live in. We would never, ever let a mother of two kids, single mom, stay on the streets if we could get her off. We would work, our, our, what's that, what's our group called that goes in, I'm blanking?
Hot Team.
Our hot team goes and finds people like this, gets them off the streets. And I just, it was so uncaring because I, you know, as, as a Democrat, I expect my group to be kind of on my side and it was weird to have them kind of attack me and kind of sad, honestly. And so hopefully they'll bring it back. They say they're going to make some amendments to it. I've just kind of was taken aback that simple legislation like that just because a lot of communities are having pinpricks. So a lot of the kids are getting needle-pricked by drug needles and they're having to pass drugs. And there's all these new problems happening. I mean, 500 feet is less than a block. I mean, it's, it's not huge distance. It's just enough to where kids, when they stop the buses and stuff, shouldn't have to walk past it. And I mean, in big cities. So that was my first dalliance at the head legislature. Don't like it, I'm going to tell you right now, that's, that's awful. I feel, I feel thankful that other people in our community want to knock that one out. Thankful. And then last thing, thank you for pointing it back to me. I want to say thank you to an amazing citizen that did something that I think is unatold of. His name is Bob Rowe, you may know him, he's Big Bob, lives over, lives over on the other side of Ranch of Cordova. He, there was a car accident where the train hit a car on our railroad. And Bob was there and jumped in. And Bob, if you don't know this, has, has health conditions of that. And he actually pulled the person out of the car that had been smashed because the car was leaking gas and fluids and they were scared it was going to explode. And he on his own, you know, with his own conditions went and actually pulled, unhooked the guy and pulled him out rather than let the guy stay there and possibly catch on fire and die. And so I just want to say a personal thank you for someone that cares about citizens more than himself. Bob Rowe, you're an amazing individual, you are truly a Ranch of Cordovan. This is the kind of, this is why I'm glad to be part of my city because I know we often put citizens first above ourselves. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Garrett, you're absolutely right. This is a gentleman who chose to put himself in that, in that situation. And Bob didn't just stand by, he went in and tried to rescue this guy from himself. So thank you. Micah.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I did attend the Volunteer Awards. I had to leave a little early, so I probably just missed you, Councilmember Sander, on that, on that transition. But I'm always amazed how they can take the American River Room and turn it into Alice in Wonderland or these different places. They take everybody far away in their, in their activities and their events. So the Volunteer Awards were great. I did also attend this last week, Saturday, the, the Holy Festival at Village Green Park. And I will say, you better be prepared if you ever go to the Holy Festival to be colorful.
Three suits ruined. I started the event and my wife won't let me go back. I've wrecked, I went there and I went in a suit, I changed because I had an event. A Neil called me, hey, can you come back real quick? We just want to take one picture. Got me again, two suits in one week, like bam! And they're pink and they're like, oh, they wash out. They don't wash out. They don't wash out at all. You have pink stripes, keep going.
So, so I subjected my whole family to this color exchange on Saturday. And so you should prepare if you ever go, just don't plan anything after it, which we mistakenly did. So you might've seen us in City Hall Saturday cleaning up from the event. But it was a great event, you know, celebrating what I learned, you know, from the Holy Festival. It's celebrating the break in the famine and break in the rain. And it was a very nice day on Saturday, so that was great, better than Sunday when the rain came back. But a really great event showing the different opportunities and diversity that we have here in Ranch of Cordova.
Oh my, okay. With that, we're going to move into our consent calendar. Items on the consent. Items on the consent calendar are deemed routine in nature. And unless we have any public comments.
I am looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands that are raised. And I do not see that we have any public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Okay. And unless there's any item that City Council wants to pull from the agenda for discussion.
Second.
Donald, did you move approval? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we need, we have a motion on items 9.1 through 9.9. Stacy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you. So we're moving into our consent calendar items. Again, they're deemed fairly routine in nature. Stacy, do you want to read the titles of 10.1 and 10.2?
Yes. 10.1, A Resolution Approving the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for Submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. 10.2, Sunridge Lot J, Village Four, Design Review Amendment, SEQA Exempt Pursuant to Section 15182, C Residential Projects, Implementing Specific Plans, Project Number PLND-0223-0062.
Thank you. Do you have any public comment?
Yes, I have one public comment for item number 10.2.
In the room?
Yes. Do you want me to call him forward?
Yes, please. Is it James?
James Garcia.
James. Why did we know?
Hey, you're going to actually like this one, just because. I'm James Garcia, Stone Creek resident. I've spoke out on this topic once before when it was set up. But today, I'm actually in support of it for you. Do the fact that the developer wishes to actually add two new smaller model homes. So I really appreciate the fact that we actually have a developer who wants to put forth the interest of our community, to be able to give opportunity for potential starter homes have a wider range for that neighborhood. So I actually support it. So I just wanted to tell you finally, hey, I'm supporting a developer once again. I'm not always opposed to them, so, but in this case, I support it, so thank you.
Thank you, James. City Council, have any questions or comments, want to pull anything? So I'm going to open the public hearing, declare that we already have public comment, close the public hearing.
Move the item.
Second.
Or move the calendar, excuse me.
The what?
The calendar.
Move the calendar.
Okay. 10.1 and 10.2. We have a motion and a second. Stacy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Item 11.1 is a public hearing item. Do you want to read all that?
I'd be delighted to. An ordinance amending Title IV Business Regulation, Chapter 4.7, 4.07 Tobacco Retailer License, and Chapter 4.50 Other Businesses, Title VIII Animals, Chapter 8.03 General Provisions, and Chapter 8.09 Procedures, Title 16 Building and Construction, Chapter 16.05 Historical Building Code, Chapter 16.10 Existing Building Code, Chapter 16.20 Housing Code, and Chapter 16.26 Energy Code. Title 22 Land Development, Chapter 22.40 Park and Recreation Dedication and Fees, and Chapter 22.170 Local Parks and Recreational Facilities. Title 23 Zoning Code, Chapter 23.310 Residential Zoning Districts and the Folsom Boulevard Specific Plan Table 2-2. Use Table for Mixed Use Classifications, SEQA Exempt Section 15061B3, 15301, and 15324.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'm going to turn it over to planning.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the Council, Darcy Geller with the Planning Department. While that seems like a lot, it's actually not a whole lot of amendments you'll see tonight. So the requested action is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinances for various amendments to the municipal code. I'm going to quickly run through these, please stop me along the way if you have some questions. The First Amendment is a modification to the Folsom Boulevard Specific Plan. This would change the permit discretionary level from a conditional use permit to an administrative use permit, and that is consistent with all of our other locations within the city. Next, we have a couple changes to Title IV Business Regulations. The first one being to our tobacco retailer license. And this would add clarification language to the Violation Section, which talks about actually possessing with the intent to sell or offer for sale flavored tobacco. So that's consistent with state law. Additionally, there's clarifications to the consistency of notices and enforcement actions. The next section of that particular title would be to remove the requirement for a special business license for someone wanting to film a motion picture or commercial within the city and just require a general business license. Title VIII Animals, this would be clarification on the definition of what continuous and incessant barking, barking means. So right now, the code just says at least 10 minutes within a 30-minute period. And we're proposing to add with no more than 30 seconds of sound in between that, or a break in the sound. The next thing would be to modify the Appeal Section for consistency throughout the code. For Title 16 Building and Construction, recently, there was a building code update that was done. Three of those ordinances had some incorrect language, so we need to come back for procedural correction. So we're going to repeal and replace those three chapters that are on the screen. Additionally, there's some amendments to the nuisance code that will again clarify the appeal fee for consistency within the code. And in terms of the housing code, right now, the consent to inspect a dwelling is 16. We're going to change that to 18. In Title 22 Land Development, there's a new definition now for a microunit dwelling, as well as a clarification on what a road dwelling unit is. And then some incorporation of calculations for, for parkland dedication, Quimby fees for a microunit, and then updating the appraisal values for various units. Any questions on that? And then additionally, there'd be some changes to Chapter 22 for consistency with those changes that are right above there. And lastly, in terms of Title 23, is modification of the residential table to allow short-term vacation rentals in residential zones. And that's consistent with direction we received from council.
Is that the one with the permits that we're trying to catch, but it's really hard to catch them? So we're just going to try to throw something against the wall?
So we will require them to get a rental housing permit, and that's how we'll monitor them. So for council action, find the municipal code amendments exempt from SEQA and waive the first reading and introduce the ordinances.
Thank you, Darcy. Any questions from the council for staff? I have one. Going back to the thing about the, oh, I lost the page. But it's the, changing the business license for a movie production from special business license to a general business license. Was there, was the reason for that any concern about the nature of the movie being filmed? Amanda.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Budge, members of Councilwoman Amanda Norton, Economic Development Manager. We have been working with a film organization here in Rancho Cordova, and we believe this is just holdover language from the county language. We've never changed since cityhood. The challenge with a special business license is for any production facility, it requires everyone to do background checks at a longer time period. In law terms, we're looking to film, it was a shorter time period.
So if there were, and, and, and we know, and we know and love our film studio, okay. But if somebody else came in and there were any concern about the type of film that they were going to do, how would you deal with that?
So currently with the general business license, they still also need to apply for a film permit. So those go together. So it'll still be routed through the police department, it'll be still routed through the planning and public works department. For full disclosure, we are looking at probably amending this entire section to do a different permit, but it acquires, this was the kickoff point in the language in the zoning code that we wanted to at least match that we, what we are currently doing.
Okay, super. Thanks, Amanda. Okay, we will open the public hearing and ask Stacy if there's any public comment.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment. I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question about the age change.
Yeah.
For apartment inspections from 16 to 18. Is there a reason why we would do that in particular?
Russ.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, Council of Russ Dushar, Neighborhood Service Manager. The biggest challenge that we have when we do these inspections is just the legality piece of entering a unit with a minor. So we just wanted to bring that up to a, an age that would protect us and, and the inspectors and other people entering the apartments.
So this is inspection while a minor is present? If like only a minor is present?
Only, correct.
Got it, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Super, thank you, Russ.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing, do we have a motion?
I will move approval.
And this is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, we'll be back for a second reading.
Right.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, regular council, regular calendar items, 12.1.
The item for 12.1 is Mobile Home Park Draft Space Rent Stabilization Memorandum of Understanding Discussion.
We've been working on this so long that Mica was deputy city manager when we started working on this. You were sitting over there.
Stefan.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. I'm Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city of Rancho Cordova. I'll just say while we're, while we're pulling up the slides, good evening, everybody. I'll be presenting the Space Rent Stabilization Memorandum, Draft Memorandum of Understanding. I want to say thank you to everybody who's been participating in this sort of long series of, of meetings that started with research and analysis, a draft ordinance, an ad hoc committee, and leading us to tonight's conversation. I want to recognize that we have several of our park residents here in the room tonight, as well as a representative from WMA, and the park owner representatives on Zoom with us this evening, so.
And WMA stands for?
WMA stands for the Western Manufactured Home Communities Association.
Thank you, Stefan.
Yep. And we've been very pleased with the participation and engagement from all of the groups that we've had during this process. We, we don't expect this to be the final, this, final discussion or meeting on this topic, but maybe it will be the, the next to last, or second to last. I'll get into the presentation here. So I'll be presenting the draft MOU, which, and also with that, a summary of the discussions that we've had at the ad hoc committee meetings. And then presenting a comparison between the main components of the draft MOU to the approved but not yet adopted Space Rent Stabilization Ordinance. And I'll kind of talk about the timeline that led us to here tonight. And then secondly, we want to receive public comments and council direction on next steps. So just again, for context, there are eight mobile home parks or manufactured home parks within Rancho Cordova, representing 1,345 spaces. One park is age-restricted, and we're using the terms mobile home and manufactured home interchangeably. So a little bit of the background, the timeline that led us to here. In 2021, council directed staff to, to do some research and analysis into multiple topics regarding mobile home parks. That led to the direction to draft a rent stabilization ordinance. And in January 2022, the City Council approved the draft ordinance, but held off on formally introducing that ordinance for adoption to form an ad hoc committee to see if there's some other better way that might be discovered to address the issues that were presented. So the ad hoc committee was formed and then met through 2022. And one of the main focuses of the meeting was really translating the major components of the ordinance into a memorandum of understanding. And I'll get into some of the key components and differences here in a moment. So these discussions, or this discussion tonight is really focused on just presenting that draft memorandum of understanding to the full city council for feedback and direction. So a summary of the ad hoc committee, it was consisting of two city council members, two city staff, six mobile home, or up to six mobile home park residents representing four parks across the city. There were three mobile home park owner representatives representing two parks, as well as two representatives from WMA. And the committee met in June, September, and November of last year. So between the group, WMA began those conversations, presenting sort of terms for an MOU alternative to the city's ordinance, which was really the main focus of, of discussion and negotiation. At the end of the meetings, all parties agreed that the MOU would be preferable. And then staff worked with the city attorney to, to draft the current MOU, which is being discussed this evening. So getting into the main comparison of the MOU and the ordinance, what are some of the differences? Just looking at some of the, the higher level components of each one. The term for the MOU would be 10 years versus the ordinance, once it's adopted, would be in perpetuity. The base rent date for the MOU would be the effective date, or once MOU would be executed, versus the ordinance choosing it, or the way it was written and adopted, or, excuse me, approved, was February 1, 2021. The annual increases, which is really the hallmark feature that, that both are really trying to, to look at. Within the MOU, it would be capped at the Consumer Price Index, or the measure of inflation for the year, but capped at no more than 6% and a floor minimum of 3%. So increases would be tied to CPI unless CPI went above 6 or below 3. In the, in the approved ordinance, it is also capped at CPI, but capped at no more than 5%, and then no floor identified in the ordinance. But within the, the MOU, park owners would waive their right to apply for any fair return increases or VEGA adjustments during the term of the MOU. Within the ordinance, that would be sort of a laborious three-to-six-month application process that would come through city staff, who would make the determination on whether that would be approved or not. And then finally.
And can you give a little bit more detail as to what a VEGA adjustment?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, so.
And what it would do under the ordinance?
Right, so cities in California, or jurisdictions in California, are allowed to pass a space rent stabilization ordinance to control how, how often, how much rents can increase by. But at times, that may put mobile home parks into a position where they can't get a fair return on their investment. So the state allows for what's called VEGA adjustments, which allow mobile home parks to apply for an increase on top of a rent control increase that would allow them to return to what is sort of a fair return on investment. That's sort of a, that's a, that's a difficult term to really define here tonight. But would allow sort of, the, within the MOU, those would be waived during this 10-year process, or 10-year MOU term. Versus the ordinance, that would be an application process that would have to come through the city. So mobile home parks and the ordinance would have to kind of submit their, their revenue sources and, and make the case that they're not getting a fair return on their investment. So you can, you can kind of imagine how much data that might involve and how many documentations that would have to be submitted to kind of make that determination. Oh, as well as the last one on this page, increases for capital improvements and replacements. The MOU would, would not require city approval, but it would require resident approval for improvements. And so improvements to park infrastructure, and replacements to park infrastructure would require resident noticing well in advance of when a replacement would take place. Within the organ, ordinance, the increases for capital improvements or replacements may require city approval under certain criteria. But they also have to go through a, a resident noticing and approval process as well. And if, you know, if the approval would, is not met, then there could be a pretty lengthy petition process that comes through the city for that application. On this page, and this is the last one for comparison, I know it's, it's fairly detailed. The rent subsidy program would be a new feature of the MOU. It would be offered to at least 5% of spaces in all parks. And that would allow a credit for rent increases that would take a homeowner's rent above, it would take the homeowner's rent above 50% of their income. So no, no homer, homeowner benefiting from the rent subsidy program would pay more than 50% of their income on their, on their space rent. Within the ordinance, there is no similar program or provision that's currently written into it. On the continued communication and updates, within the MOU, the parks, all of the parks would be submitting annual. would be submitting annual reports to the city on rent levels, pass through amounts, CPI increases, and rent subsidy participants. So the city would be able to use that information. It would be detailed enough for the city to make a determination whether the parks are increasing rents according to CPI. Within the ordinance, there is there isn't a similar provision on annual reports and continued communications as as written. Regarding enforcement and dispute resolution, the city under the MOU would require mediation that would be sort of through the city or a city city process and require that mediation to go through the city prior to filing a lawsuit or civil action. Within the ordinance, the city, park owners, and residents individually may all initiate civil action to enforce the terms of the ordinance. So and then lastly, within with the administrative fee in the MOU, there's there's no similar provision to the ordinance that would create or allow the city to create a fee to administer the MOU program. But there are very meaningful and lots of of fewer processes to actually administer. Within the ordinance, recognizing that there are some pretty heavy processes that would have to be administered, there is a city option to establish a fee to recover administrative costs, and that could be split 50/50 between parks and resident, park owners and residents.
Did you have a a fee in mind?
We had not identified a administrative fee, the last discussion item for the ordinance. That could be a subject to a future discussion.
Okay.
So options for this evening and for council consideration and next steps. So we're happy to receive public comment and council feedback tonight on the draft MOU. There are some several possible next steps that are some of them are listed here below. These options are not mutually exclusive, and what that means is the first the first option could be to finalize the draft MOU and bring it back to for city council adoption, as well as reconvene the ad hoc committee. But looking at at number three there, the so the city council could also move forward at the same time with adopting the approved ordinance in addition to executing MOUs with all of the parks. In which case, you know, the the MOUs would take precedence over the ordinance, but any parks that sort of default in the terms of the MOU or or would not would not continue with the MOU but would then fall under the jurisdiction of the ordinance. So there's several options here tonight. The staff recommendation is to move forward with option one, which is to finalize the draft MOU. And I would like to highlight that the the draft MOU here this evening is is probably in its 95% final form. There's some non substantial amendments that staff would make prior to bringing it back for adoption, if that's the council's direction. And with that, I will open it up for comments and questions.
Okay, council.
Yeah, so I guess I'll start. Thank you, Stefan, Micah. This was most of the year, last year, trying to put this together. I want to thank the residents. I want to thank the park owners. To do something like this and get to the final meeting and it it took a lot, and nobody was really happy with the final. There were there were things that the residents wanted, and I think there were things that the owners didn't want to necessarily give up on. And I think that's the hallmark of a good deal, is that no one's super happy about what they got out of it. But I think it's a better process. I think we learned that if we were to just adopt the ordinance the way it was, that there were ways to get the rents above what we were trying to keep them under. And so I think this is the best deal that we can make for, I think, all sides and gives some level of safety to to the residents that were concerned about the the increases that they're seeing and also hopefully have a a uniform program to assist folks that can't afford to to stay in their homes and may be forced to to sell. So I I think it's it's a good ordinance the way it is. I don't think we need to adopt. I'm sorry. It's a good MOU the way it is. I don't think we need to adopt or or continue to carry the stick out there of of the ordinance. But I think the proof will be in the pudding as we put this together and actually see what comes out of it and how many people are being assisted through the through the the rental assistance program and some of the other things that we talked about. And also, there's some there's some reporting that goes to the city as far as upgrades and and maintenance that that we wouldn't have gotten and we're not getting now. So I think it that this this allows us to try this and see if this is better than what we were trying for. And and hopefully this lasts for 10 years and and, you know, we're not talking about it again. But again, I applaud everyone that was involved with it. We got darn close to having that as the ordinance, but I think ultimately this this is better for the residents than than what we were going to do.
Garrett.
What was the guy's name? Bob. What was Bob's last name?
Van Cleef. Van Cleef, thank you.
I would have, I was told I can't name it after him, but we're going to name the ordinance after him. Because this is one of those things that he really pulled and tried for, but since we're not allowed to do that, I honestly think this is a better option. It's not rent control, but it's it's like the community working with the landlords. We're finally going to have reports, which David and I are big on data, so we'll actually know if it. They're also not only with the keeping the rents at a certain level, they'll also double down on being able to help the most needy by having these programs to be able to invest to keep their rents lower by giving them options and helps and bailouts. So and then also there is the it wasn't everyone was happy about it, but I like Donald said, it's something that we worked really, really hard on. I think it's the first one we've seen like this in the region, and I'm glad that the mobile park owners actually came to the table to negotiate and put together a good MOU. And I'd be happy to push this forward, and and if there's any way to name it after Bob, I would love to do that, but still would love to nub that from him. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Siri, comments, questions?
So I mean, this definitely, this is more than a two year of effort with nearly 15 member committee, and, you know, we've gone through this a couple of times. I also am in alignment with option one, the MOU for now, and is the right way to go.
Thank you. David.
Yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues who worked on this and on this committee. This is a great outcome. This is a a very messy. So I thought Donald and Garrett, your summaries here are great. So I don't really have much to add, but, you know, this is a very messy issue. As we've talked about before, rent control is not an ideal formula. It it only works in very limited situations where the private market is sort of broken. This may have been one of those areas. You know, you could you could argue that. The fact that no one is completely pleased with it, I do view as a big win, because that means you found a a middle ground, and that's how government frankly works best. Picking winners and losers is not a great position for a city council to be in. But mitigating a bad situation, trying to to cut off the worst and not harm the the good actors at the same time, that's where we should be. So good work on this, guys.
My only question, what happens to the draft ordinance if we simply adopt the MOU?
We we've never formally introduced it for adoption. We could work with the city attorney to to see or the city clerk to see what the what the appropriate process would be to, I guess, supersede that with the adoption of the MOU.
All we voted on was to give direction to staff to draft it so that we could adopt it. So three of us told them to do it. We've never actually adopted it. We just wouldn't.
No, that's what I said. So what would happen to the draft ordinance?
Nothing, because we've never had them do it.
It would be further work would be tabled. And if there's issues or non compliance with the MOU, it provides that it could be potentially picked up in the future.
But technically, technically, it's been tabled in lieu of the ad hoc committee, which finished its work, so it's still tabled.
Right. Okay. Did anyone else come to speak to this item?
Yes. So we'll start with the speakers in the room. Jill Fellows. Following Jill will be Michelle Forrest. Following Michelle will be Salo. So Jill.
Hi, Jill.
Hi. Good evening. I'm pro rent stabilization only because of a concern I ran into regarding the MOU. Other than that, I'm neutral. But good evening, city council members and staff members. Am I speaking too loudly?
No, you're great.
Thank you, okay. Thank you for scheduling this meeting, so I can speak about the subjects of the draft rent stabilization ordinance and the memorandum of understanding. When I read about MU MOUs, by the way, I was surprised. I had never even heard that the MOU had been being worked on. But I don't know how I could do better to keep checking for the new items on the site. I I I understand that an MOU is a method or a means for setting forth an enforced agreement with one or more persons over a certain length of time. And that when the time expires, the signers of the agreement will decide if they can come to terms and create a contract type document and then proceed with their ideas if they can agree with that. That's the end of that thought that prompted me to take this direction. Because I'm kind of worried by that, that the MOU doesn't hold what an MOU is been created to to do. Although the parties come to came to and come to an agreement also for an ordinance that has already set, it's already set forth requirements, instructions, terms, conditions, directives, and set, et cetera. The MOU must the MOU must not be used as a standalone document or be in partnership with the ordinance. And the ordinance has substantial information that we need to be directed by. However, not using the MO will not would not be a lost cause. It's logical to me that all feasible additions, changes, and corrections now contained in the MOU can be, and I use the word feasible, can be moved to the draft ordinance. If the best parts take them and just move them. The city and the ordinance ad hoc committee members have put in many hours already, so it makes sense to me to continue to work on the ordinance on behalf of the residents of Mobile Country Club.
Your time is up. So basically, your question is why, what's the advantage of the MOU over an ordinance? Because the MOU has a has a sunset date and the ordinance wouldn't.
I I don't believe it's the correct prop, the correct document been created. However, it's been however it came in to be used, that we're not, it it doesn't. We can't use it.
Okay.
Because of that. It isn't the right kind of a document to view what we what we've been after.
Okay, let's let's collect everyone's questions, and then we'll ask staff to to respond. Michelle.
He's already answered almost my questions already.
Oh, okay. All right. Next speaker.
Salo.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Salo Landano, and I'm the Norden, California Regional Representative for WMA. We work on support, training, education, and advocacy on behalf of owners and operators of mobile home parks throughout California. And I'm here today to speak in support of the MOU being presented to you this evening. The MOU is a product of several months of work and cooperation between city council, staff, residents, and owners and operators of mobile home parks in Rancho Cordova. By sitting down across the room from each other for hours at a time, we're able to highlight and resolve some of these issues that would have otherwise stood as obstacles to an agreement like this. We commend the work of the city council, the staff, the residents that participated in this ad hoc committee process. Owners and operators of mobile home parks in Rancho Cordova are experienced, they're responsible, and they care deeply about the community. They engage in good faith, and they stand committed to the document standing here before you. By this adoption of this MOU, the city of Rancho Cordova will continue to serve as a model of good governance for the region and for all of California. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm now going to go to Zoom, and we have Mike Patterson. Following Mike Patterson will be Jane Kruger. Mike, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Mike?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, it seems to be that I'll be going against the grain here. The MOU has kind of blindsided many residents over here. The ad hoc meetings were, I'm not going to say they're surreptitious, but my neighbors didn't know what was being discussed in those meetings. So I'm going to start with that, but I've got a written statement here, so I can get done in a couple of minutes, so bear with me.
Go right ahead.
Won't be it won't be so extemporaneous. So make no mistake, the MOU is a watered down version of the RSO. First and foremost, even a formal memorandum simply doesn't have the teeth of a city ordinance, which does have the force of law behind it. No, the MOU favors both the city and the park owners with slightly less administration for the city and a guaranteed sunset of the park owner's obligation when the MOU simply expires in 10 years. Worse yet, the obligation simply ceases to even exist when a resident sells or otherwise transfers ownership of their mobile home. One can only imagine what effect this loophole will have on the market value of one's mobile home if they decide to sell it. So whether they sell their homes or the agent residents of my park simply pass away, the strength of the MOU will be diluted step by step until its force is significantly weakened, and then it finally just disappears. A whopping 30% of all households in the U.S. have unaffordable rent or mortgage payments. Manufactured housing residents have a median household income of under $30,000 a year. Meanwhile, manufactured homes currently represent the largest source of unsubsidized affordable housing in the entire United States, and it's not just for senior citizens. In fact, outside of senior parks, most mobile home parks are actually under 30 years old. So the council should carefully consider how weak and impermanent this memorandum will offer significant protection for the current inventory of affordable housing in the city, let alone expand it, which is what we desperately need. No home foundations continue to be poured in the south part of the city for development after development of more unaffordable housing in Rancho Cordova, while affordable housing continues to dwindle. So I strongly encourage the council to be bold, like over 80 other entities in the state, and adopt an RSO. Now, I agree with Jill. We could probably incorporate some of the some of the things that were in the MOU. So anyway, thank you for hearing me and my concerns, and I'm sorry if I'm swimming against the tide here, but.
Your time is up.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, Mike. Next.
The next speaker is Jan Kruger. Jan, you've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Jan.
Hi, thank you. I think I was one of the very few residents that had attended every single one of the ad hoc committee meeting that we had over the last year and so many months. And I definitely want to thank Stefan and all the other ad hoc committee members for all their hard work on this. There was a lot of anger, frustration throughout the meetings, but I do support this MOU. I do have benefit of understanding it in depth because I did go to all the meetings. So I understand some of the other residents may not have the benefit of that level of understanding, but I do feel like I'm a good representative of the residents, and I've been in discussion with some residents that are very, very low income, and they're very much looking forward to having that rental assistance program adopted for all the parks. I know right now it's only in one park, but we really, really need that in all of the parks, and that's going to make a huge difference for the residents. So even though we would have liked to have received more, there was give and take on both sides, and I think this represents a good balance of give and take, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to the ad hoc committee members for their support in this.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else? That's all the public comment that we have for this item.
Can I add one?
Oh, sure.
Hi, my name's Cheryl Cass and I live at 415 Royal Crest Circle in Rancho Cordova, which is one of the mobile home parks. I didn't hear what you guys just talked about because I was driving. But I did read the memorandum. Overall, I thought it was okay. What I disagree about is the 6% as a cap. And the reason I disagree about that is that the rent price that we pay is, doesn't include, like the utilities and the trash and the sewer. That's in addition to whatever your rent is, which you guys may already know. And I did it, figured it out at 6%. I figured it out at 3%. And I figured it out based on what my new rent is, the base rent, which is $919, starting February. At 3%, in 10 years, it'll be $35 a month added. At 6% in 10 years, it'll be $93 a month added. And social security is not going to go up 90 bucks a month. And the trash, we added another bin, so that's going to go up. So the sewer is already built in because it's from the county or whatever, from when we put in that sewer treatment plant. So that's going to go up. The storm drain is separate. So even though you got the base rent, oh, and the water is separate too. So that base land rent is not include all the rest of the utilities. And I pay the fees on my dad's house and it's like 790 bucks for his house. And he's got a six-bedroom house. But my current rent that I'm paying or that I'm writing the check for is $995. And so, but the base rent for that is 879 and it's going up over 50 bucks for this next year. It'll start at 919 and then all the utilities be on top of that. So I don't have a real problem with it 3%, but I do have a problem at 6%. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. So Stefan or Adam, the first question that was asked is whether the MOU really does the job or should we be adopting the ordinance? Because it has more teeth, it's more affordable. Perhaps it could address some of these questions.
Sure. Stefan, I think that that to some extent relates to Section 10. Why don't you talk about the city's role in enforcing?
Yeah, I think to your point, Adam, yeah, the city would be the enforcement agency under the terms of the MOU. So the MOU would be binding to park owners. And it is, as written, it would be sort of a recorded document against the park. So it would have teeth to it within the terms that are written within the MOU. And the city would have the ability to initiate an action on behalf of affected homeowners to enforce the terms of the MOU. So within those annual reports that we'll be receiving.
Park owners.
The city would be able to initiate action on behalf of.
On behalf of homeowners.
Homeowners, yes.
To the park owners.
Correct. Right. And the reports that we would be receiving annually would give us the detailed enough information in order to have the necessary information to enforce the MOU. One of the deficiencies that we've run into over the last couple of years researching the issue is just the lack of information that is available in order to get a clear picture. And so that's one of the things that we're most excited about moving forward.
We'll know when the rent increases come, what they are. Can you address the person online commented something about at the sale of their home? That this agreement is still with, the agreement is still with the park owners and sale of the properties would not affect this?
Correct. So, sorry, I'm not sure where the hum is coming from.
Can we lower the volume a little bit? And maybe is the lectern still on?
But yeah, he said it doesn't apply to the sale or transfer of the property.
Right. So all mobile home spaces would be affected under the terms of the MOU, except for sort of long-term leases or spaces that have leases over 12 months. There are certain transfers, well, at the time of a transfer, the base rent can be readjusted if the base rent hasn't been keeping pace with inflation. I just want to remind everybody too that the rent, allowable rent increases would be tied to the CPI measure. So at no more than 6% and no less than 3%. So, but at the time of a sale of a mobile home unit, the base rent could be readjusted. Future homeowners within affected parks under the MOU would be covered under the terms of the MOU. There are certain types of transfers that are not allowed to allow another adjustment to the base rent. Such as if there's a transfer from one spouse to another spouse or to a descendant in some of those cases where the base rent would not be allowed to readjust at a higher level just because the unit was transferred to another resident.
And keep in mind too, under the ordinance, the VEGA adjustments, any one of the park owners could have gone and seek an action to raise the rents based on the costs and maintenance that they had. So the amount of teeth in the ordinance comparatively to this, and again, it was only 5% to begin with. And with all of these additional things, rent support programs or rental assistance programs that are now going to be at every park, not just one. And this is only 1% above the cap that we were talking about. And I will tell you that that's not where this conversation started. This conversation started with an offer of, I believe, a floor of three and a cap of 10. So if you look at where the negotiations ended up, even the last meeting, I believe they were at three and a half and seven and a half or six and a half, and we ended up at six. So all in all, and again, David kind of, you know, repeated what I said. I get that there are folks that wish that this was better for the residents. And I guarantee you, I know there are folks on the owner's side that wish that this was a better deal for them. And we started pretty far apart and this is where we ended up.
So what happens at the end of the 10 years? Is there any right to renew or obligation to renew?
Yes, absolutely. So there is the ability to renegotiate the terms of the MOU and extend it.
There is also the option of the city deciding to enact another ordinance. So I mean, again, this is in lieu of the action that we had taken to direct staff to do the ordinance. In evaluating it, all, looking at all of it, in my opinion, this is better than what I think the ordinance would have done. Will it assist? I know we had a lot of conversations about the extra utilities and things like that. State law, I guess, changed a while back to where all of those extra fees cannot be included into the rent. They have to be directly passed on. So your smud bill, your water bill, your sewer bill, your trash bill, all of those things have to be directly billed. The ordinance had no effect on that anyways. So we didn't have an ability to address any of those items. Frankly, those are things that hopefully through talking with your smud board member or your, well, David mentioned he's on the sanitation district right now. So one of those is a fee that he's on the board of. So at the city level, we had the ability to affect the rent, the space rent. That's it. That's all we could talk about. And I know the first couple of meetings were, there was some frustration because they wanted us to, especially the residents, wanted us to address all of these other things that frankly are not within our jurisdiction. And so for the subject that we were talking about, we get rental assistance at all sites. We get informed of all rent increases and we can monitor to make sure that they're abiding by the agreement. None of that were things that we had in place before. They would have gone into place with the ordinance. But with this and with that agreement and a couple of other things, we also, the park owners are agreeing that they will not seek a VEGA adjustment during the period. Which in theory, if you had 5% and they claim that they need seven, there's a legal way for them to do that. And they're saying they will not do that for a decade.
So the rule hold then that the city has is that at the end of the 10 years, should the owners say they don't want to renew the MOU? Then the city's alternative would be to immediately put a draft ordinance on the table?
But that would be in 10 years, whoever is serving on this council would decide what they want to do.
Right. But that's my point. That would be in terms of the policy of the issue, that would be the city's option to regain control.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Anybody else want to speak to the item?
There's no additional public comment for this item.
Okay. Then we are asked to direct staff to implement one of the four recommendations?
I already said my piece.
And you.
I propose going with option one.
Okay. Thank you, Siri. Donald, which option was it?
Option one.
Okay. Garrett?
Yep. Option one.
David? Okay. All right. Do we need a motion for that? All right. Somebody move option one then?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Stacy call the roll.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you. And again, we really do want to thank all of the members of the committee. As David says, this may not be perfect, but it's certainly a step in the right direction. And we appreciate everybody coming tonight and everybody who's on Zoom. Thank you all. Okay. Item 12.2?
Item 12.2, the title is Naming of a Room Located at the Rancho Cordova Use Center.
Do we have any public comment on this one?
No, we do not.
Can I just move the item?
Second.
Oh, call.
Oh.
Good idea. We have a motion.
I had so many words planned.
We have a motion in.
Did you really? Oh, Jesus.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any?
I already proposed this stinking thing at a dinner, I think.
Is there anybody who came to speak to this item?
I already asked that.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item. And if I give the public a moment in Zoom to raise their hand.
Yes.
Are there any members of the public via Zoom that would like to speak to this item? Please raise your hand.
Call the question.
I do not see any item or any hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. Would you call the roll, please?
So we have a motion by Terry and a second by Sander. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. 12.3?
12.3, the item is Mine Shaft Digital Freeway Signs Discussion. Good evening, Mayor Budge. Arlene Grandoson Jones with the Planning Department. And the project for discussion today are proposed digital freeway signs on the Mine Shaft property. I'll wait here till the clerk can get the presentation online.
Okay. I'll be right back.
And for context, I just wanted to start that the city established the digital freeway signs overlay to regulate the installation and use of these types of signs in Rancho Cordova. The purpose of the overlay identified here in this map is to help mitigate some of the impacts of these types of signs, such as excessive glare and light pollution on certain uses in the city. Now, some of the existing development standards for these signs in the overlay include a maximum of two display areas per sign visible only by opposing directions of traffic, a minimum distance of 2,500 feet between signs, a maximum height of 60 feet, a maximum sign area of 672 square feet per display area, and display of static messages only, excuse me. Additionally, for every one digital freeway sign installed, an applicant must remove at least four legally existing billboard structures. The proposed project is for two signs on the Mine Shaft property. Now, this proposal was presented to the Ad Hoc Signs Committee on January 18, 2023, where the committee members provided general feedback. Now, before the applicant begins the environmental analysis for the proposed project, staff requests feedback from council and key components of the proposed project. The proposed signs will each have two display areas. So really, display areas will have, there will actually be four total, two on each of the signs. They are located approximately 2,650 feet from each other. Each display area is approximately 1,200 square feet. And we'll refer to them here as the west sign and the east sign. The west sign is proposed at 70 feet and is in proximity to the proposed Rancho Cordova Parkway US 50 interchange project. And this project rendering the approximate height of the interchange is identified by the gray line you can see in the photo. The east sign is proposed at 60 feet and is located close to the existing clear channel sign. That's proposed for removal. Now, at the applicant's request, the city and the applicant may enter into an operating agreement, which outlined the requirements for installation, ownership, maintenance, use rights, and utilities for a digital freeway sign. The applicant can also use the operating agreement to deviate from the development standards and requirements. As proposed, the project requests deviation for the following. Maximum area, so the proposing 1,200 square feet on each face. The standard is 672 square feet. Maximum height, the standard is 60 feet. And the proposed west sign will be proposed at 70 feet. And removal of existing billboards. Applicant is proposing removal of one existing clear channel sign. During the Ad Hoc Signs Committee meeting and subsequent meetings between the applicant and city staff, clarification regarding the proposed project's potential impacts on the interchange project were discussed. And the issues and concerns discussed include the potential conflicts with the interchange construction staging area with the proposed west sign location and timing of tree removals identified in the interchange project to provide more visibility for proposed east sign location. In response, the applicant shifted the west sign approximately 150 feet west of the interchange project from the originally proposed location. And currently, the timing of the tree removal identified in the interchange project is still being discussed and clarified. This evening, city staff is requesting city council feedback on the following topics. The proposed number of signs, the proposed maximum height of the signs, the proposed maximum area of the signs, and any other council's concerns and questions. So with that, staff and project applicants are here for questions and clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Did the applicants have a presentation they want to make? Brian?
Cooley, representing the community council. I also wanted to introduce here today, as you all know, Shelley Blanchard, the executive director of the Cordova Community Council, and Dave Niva with Primout, who's a sign consultant to the community council, has been advising them on the design and the digital sign industry a bit. And just wanted to just add a couple of remarks to the staff presentation, which provides pretty much the background information on the application. The whole impetus behind the signs at the Mine Shaft property is pretty basic. It's, you've got an opportunity here with one landowner over 12 acres. The property is roughly a mile in length with pretty good distribution between the two signs on the east and the west. And the impetus really is long-term stability for the Cordova Community Council. The revenue that the digital signs would bring to the Cordova Community Council would be deployed back into the community in the way of the events and the community engagement that the community council has participated over the last 50 years. You know, we believe it's a really significant return on investment with the signs by the Cordova Community Council and by you as a city to evaluate the merits of their recommendation. I just wanted to, and I jotted down earlier, a couple of key events that all of you are familiar with that the Cordova Community Council does in Rancho Cordova City and provides benefit back to the citizens in the surrounding communities. and provides benefit back to citizens in the surrounding communities. Uh, probably the biggest event of the year, which you're all familiar with, is the Fourth of July event that's put on every year. Uh, the IFest, which is the International Festival, they're celebrating the rich diversity here in Rancho Cordova, as well as the Kids' Day in the Park, uh, the State of the City Address in November, and then obviously what you just mentioned earlier, the Volunteer Awards, the Alice in Wonderland Celebration, and many other smaller events that occur throughout the year. And, you know, that level of event planning, which is rival, non-rival to anywhere in our, in our region, uh, has cost. And I think a lot of you have seen the growth in the community council over the years. And again, the impetus behind the digital signs and this gift of a property, the Mine Shaft, is this long-term stability, uh, for the organization. And I would just add to that, that, you know, we're in a corridor where there's no stranger to digital signs and other, uh, changes throughout the Highway 50 corridor. We're talking about the interchange project that's going to occur across the property. Um, and so there is a lot going on, and I guess the last part of it is there is a limited market share for digital signs in this corridor. And if it's not the city of Rancho Cordova as a land jurisdiction, you've got the city of Folsom to the east of you, and incorporated Sacramento County and, and the city of Sacramento. And so there will be a proliferation of signs in this corridor, whether it's in your jurisdiction or, or another jurisdiction. And so the, the rational thinking would be is it, it ought to be in Rancho Cordova. It ought to be with a community partner, uh, as the community council that can work with you for, uh, city advertising on the signs of various events and programs around the city. And so, you know, we'd ask for your support and consideration. I just wanted to speak also to the, the deviation of the signs beyond the standards. Initially, the signs were, 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 were above and beyond your standard of 60 feet in height. Uh, the westerly sign is still at 70 feet, and that's driven by the interchange that's going to be built across the property so that there is still visibility of the sign for eastbound and westbound traffic. But the sign on the eastern edge of the property, we were able to bring that down from our initial pre-application down to your standard of 60 feet. So that's brought into compliance with your design standards, uh, which will be less visual intrusion to Highway 50 and even the Cold River community to the north. And so, you know, we've been really, uh, pleased to work with your staff to really bring those signs in a better, better conformity. And, um, again, I think this represents a great opportunity for a return on investment to not just Rancho Cordova Community Council, but again, the entire Rancho Cordova community. And, uh, Dave and Shelley are here to also offer, uh, some comments and answer questions. And I just wanted to have Dave come up briefly and talk about a little bit of the process of engaging with some of the sign companies. And the last thing I'll say before I give the podium over to Dave is typically, you're used to seeing applications for a design review from sign corporations, uh, out of the community, out of state in many instances. And there's less of flexibility to work with you on the design and the, the, the amount of time allotted on the digital billboards as opposed to working with the landowner here that has the wherewithal with our team to, to, to work through the entitlements and the permitting. And so, uh, it's a little bit different situation than some of the signs you've approved in the past. So let me offer the podium to Dave to talk a little bit about the process in engaging with some of the sign companies and some of the potential revenue that the community council can experience here over the years.
All right, and I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Are you all aware that Caltrans has put up a sign out there?
Has that been done recently?
Yep.
I'm not, but I'm not surprised.
Could, it's got to be in the last two weeks or so. It's somewhere between the, um, under crossing for the Buffalo Ditch and the turn into the Mine Shaft. It's on Caltrans right-of-way property. But it's, and it's, uh, obviously, it's going to be one of the, um, emergency notification chains of, on Highway 50 required, you know, that kind of thing.
Doesn't it sound like a permanent sign?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Is it, okay.
It's one of, it's one of Caltrans' permanent freeway alert notification signs. There's somewhere, there's one down around west of Watt Avenue, I'm thinking, that says the same kind of thing.
There's one west of Bradshaw they just put in, there's one between Zinfandel and Matherfield that they just put in.
Okay.
Uh, and probably one each direction, I'm just thinking of westbound.
Again, been in the same, in the last two weeks.
They're putting a series of them.
Yeah.
And with that, let me also ask Dave to speak to, we've, we've been, we've had discussions with Caltrans as relates to these signs and gotten their initial take on the signs as relates to the interchange and their, their easement. So let me have him speak to that as well, so.
Hi, I'm David Naiwa. I own, uh, Primout Media, we're a billboard company. And we also specialize in, uh, entitlement, obtaining entitlements, and then monetizing billboards for large agencies, large companies. We've done it for the Sacramento Kings, a few other sports teams that we're working with right now. And we've been retained by the community council. I was not aware of a new digital sign out there that Caltrans has put in. We, we've already, uh, we, we took the application of what we're proposing, and we've submitted it to Caltrans already.
Yeah.
For, they have a preliminary, uh, application process where you can submit, and they'll tell you if it's, if it's something that they will approve or if there's deficiencies. And they've said that what we're proposing is, is something that they would approve. If I can just touch on real quick the, the, the process of why we're going through it this way. So in 2015, the, the Sac, the city of Sacramento and the Kings, um, the city of Sacramento offered the Kings in their non-subsidy six digital billboard signs, and the Kings didn't know what to do with it. So, um, they came to us, they retained us, we went out, we located the signs, we, um, took it through, helped manage it through the entitlement process, pulled a building permit, and then went to Caltrans and obtained the license from Caltrans. At that point, we went out, threw an RFP, and went to the market and, um, spoke with all the big billboard companies, local, all over town, out of state. And the Kings now have a, um, long-term agreement with, um, what is now one of the big three, uh, billboard companies. I foresee something very similar to that happening here in that, uh, after we get through the process, the community council will retain ownership of the rights to the billboards. So they'll enter into an agreement, uh, we'll take that package, we'll go out, we'll request proposals from all the billboard companies. And then we'll enter into a long-term agreement. At the end of that long-term agreement, it will then go back out to an RFP, a proposal, again, that's probably 20 years from now. And it'll go out again, and they can go out and they can chop it out to the market again, and they can continue to do that in perpetuity because the community council will own that asset. Uh, if I can just speak on, uh, just for a moment regarding the, the, the major deviation that we have in the sign is the size of the face. And it's just, it's simply because it, it's so far off the freeway, that additional 200 feet, is that it, the perception of it is not going to be that it's so much larger from the freeway. That's the purpose behind it, is, uh, the reason why it's larger, it's not because... So if there's any other questions regarding billboards?
So just to that point, it's geometry, so it won't look any larger. It's just the fact that it is a little larger because it's set slightly farther away.
And you, you said it much better than I did, yes.
Any additional questions? Anything else?
No, that's all, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, Shelley?
Nothing unless you have questions.
Okay. Did anybody else come to speak to the item?
Yes, we have speaker cards from James Garcia and Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and then I will go to Zoom.
James?
Hello, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. Um, I'm here on behalf, um, just because of, it, it sparked my interest when I saw this item at the Mine Shaft, since we are trying to purchase that land for our nice little off-ramp, on-ramp for the Rancho Cordova Parkway, correct? Just making sure that that's kind of, we're ultimately going to have that. I looked at the proposal, looked at our nice little ordinance that talks about the 60-foot height, and this one's going to be 70 feet. We've already, are tasked with a lot of projects of different developer-type functionalities that want to break our height standards. Um, this one also is going to be 1,200 feet in, as far as full square feet, instead of 672 square feet. Nearly double. Even you're, oh, you're going to go in and shove it 150 feet off the freeway, that's still double, or nearly double our aspect. We also have guidelines for this whole section that says, for every one digital sign, you're supposed to remove four stagnant, non-digital signs. This is being proposed of two digital signs, two different locations of the property, they should be removing eight digital, or non-digital signs. The distance, um, I kind of beg to differ, looking at their little map, um, using 150-foot scale, it looks more like it's going to be about 1,200 feet, maybe 1,350 feet. Our requirement is a minimum of 2,500 feet between digital signs. There's a reason for it, it's so it doesn't pollute, the fact that this one on the westbound, one is going to be the closest side to that off-ramp. We're going to be so close, and it's going to be a cluster, and then the fact that it's not a stagnant sign, any person getting off that freeway off-ramp or future off-ramp will go ahead and start looking at that and looking, oh, am I getting off the freeway? Or am I looking at a sign that's constantly changing? Since it's not a stagnant where you could see it farther away and view it, and, oh, I want to eat at Carl's Jr., great. No, now it's going to say, oh, go to Thunder Valley, or maybe, um, somewhere else. So it just causes a lot of confusion with it not being a stagnant type of a billboard, um, so close to an off-ramp. Again, I just really wish we'd keep to our standards. We, 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 we did a lot of work to try to get them. Granted, we copied and cut and paste right out of Sacramento County for a lot of our stuff at one point in time, as was mentioned recently, that we're just kind of fixing that with one of our ordinances now. Um, let's, let's keep them. Let's keep our proper standards, work through a better process as opposed to fixing them on the fly here, especially with, we have a new Caltrans sign, so it's, it's a cluster, too many signs, too much noise confusion. Fact that it's up, going to be up in Folsom versus here, let them have them over there because ours, I'd like to have a nice, clean highway and not have clutter. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Helen?
Hello, I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and I live over in the Tiffany area. Uh, I'm totally opposed to this, we're the city of trees, and they mentioned cutting down trees. Right now, you drive up, uh, when you cross, it got from Sacramento County to Folsom, and you're riding through Rancho Cordova, you see trees. We had a discussion of, a few months ago, might have been a year ago, about wanting to put those large signs up in certain areas so that we could, um, enhance, uh, business opportunities for customers. And they were out of, out of the, uh, the, how do you say? They don't conform to our rules. So once again, we have somebody from out of town and a local person that's telling us we should jump on this or we're going to miss out on a, a fundraising opportunity. We need to stay with our ordinance. And I totally agree with everything that James has said. Uh, we were looking on his, uh, phone at the visuals, what it really looks like. And it's, it's a travesty. And if you vote for something like this, I think you're gonna, you're hurting us because you don't have eight signs you're going to take down in that area. You're going to be a safety hazard, as James said, when you put the new ramp on it. And, and just because they're moving it a little bit away doesn't mean they can double the, um, the, the specs of a sign. And we have, we have, um, special things. The minute you allow this one, somebody else is going to come in and want something even larger. So we need to stay with what we did because it was more conservative. It wasn't turning us into Las Vegas. And we only have like five miles or whatever it is of the freeway that we have. We don't need all this trash. I like the clean line, I like to see the trees. I see the telephone poles, but they've been here for decades, so it's not like we've added them. They're, they're something that's needed, we don't need these signs. And it's an out-of-towner that wants to do something, we have a local that's pushing us, telling us, is representing them, telling us that, hey, if we don't do it, Folsom's going to do it. I don't think Folsom's going to do it, and even if they do do it, they've got hills there. It doesn't seem like something they'll do, but we don't need to be ru, um, rushing into this and putting some trashy signs up, because I think it's going to be trashy looking. And right now, we have an image, and our image is a city of trees, a playful city. Uh, signs aren't a city of trees, it goes against them. He wants to cut down trees, and everybody knows, I'm all for our trees, thank you.
Thank you, Helen, anybody else?
There's no additional speakers, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Donald?
Um, not necessarily questions, uh, I, I think switching the one from, where is it? At Nature Wood right now? Across the street, I, right, is it Nature Wood in their parking lot right now? Yeah, that one, I don't think I have a problem with, it me, it meets the standard. I guess I would be open to one, it... The, the one speaker, and I, I don't know if he and I agree very often, but I, but I will say that at 90 feet and seeing it from the over, from the, the off-ramp, I guess, um, I, I, I'm wondering, would the compromise be bringing it to 60 feet and having it one way? So that you can see it coming to the, to the east and it being low enough to where it's being obstructed by the off-ramp? And keeping it to the same size height, but I, I wouldn't die on that rock. But, um, to me, the point, the point of the marketing of, of these is for the highway, not the surface streets, which the, the off-ramp would be the surface street, in my opinion. And so, having it there where there's probably going to be stop signs to start and lights at some point there already, or, or at, at a future date, um, that I think it would, and, and it's kind of the reason that, you know, there was, there was an ad hoc committee to signs before I was on the council that was looking at where to put the two of these, and then ultimately, we placed one west of this site, was the first one that we did that took out, um, uh, or it, it repurposed a very large static sign to make it. And then there was a committee that looked at two different sites, which was the Nature Wood one and one closer at, I think, the, the aggregate company closer. And the ad hoc committee recommended the one that was closer to, to the off-ramp, to, at Hazel, and I was never a part of that, I had been newly elected, and I looked at it and said, why the hell would you put it closer to the off-ramp? Go put it at Nature Wood, even though, and, and at some point, whoever was operating those two, they were competing with each other, and one of them went to the site that the committee said was the one that they wanted, and then I and others agreed to the other one. So this has been a moving target for a while, so, uh, for the one to the, to the west, I'm wondering if it, if it makes more sense to have it lower to where, and just have it facing to the, to the, for the, for the eastbound traffic to see it. The other thing, the other question that I have is, for the references around removing of the four signs, I think at last count, when we did this last time, we're not even at four left in the city, right? How many are, how many static signs are left within the city?
I don't have that information right now.
When we first started doing, I don't want to interrupt.
No, 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 I, and I know this answer, that there was 50 or something, and, and you had this...
Way more.
It was like 23 to one at one point.
We had 250, four-by-eight billboards along, along the railroad corridor.
Yeah, so, uh, if, if memory serves, the last time we did this, we got the four, and, and at the time, there was a proposal to say, hey, could we do one more? And I think at the time, we were told there wasn't even enough left to do that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I would imagine that, Darcy, do you have that number? Thanks, come on, because... Because I remember when we had this conversation, and I, I don't think there's a way to get to the standard of the one. And, and for anyone that's arguing that it's, that it would be eight, they're replacing a digital billboard that already met the standard, so we're talking about a new standard. And frankly, if you go with my idea of having it one way, the argument would be, you're only getting half a sign, so you only would need two to meet the standard.
Yeah, so there's, um, approximately four or less, um, so that are left in the city, so they could not meet the standard. That's why with the operating agreement, that kind of gets around that standard. But last count, I believe there might actually just be three left.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought I heard the last time that we did this was, we didn't have enough left to ever meet the standard of a new one coming in. So that's the end of that, I, I also wouldn't say that the standard would be eight because it's not a new sign, it's replacing one that met the standard, remove four signs so it could be put up. And then if that one's coming down, that one, that'd be a moot point, in my opinion. But I, I, I do have some concern about the cross-traffic of the off-ramp and it being higher than that. And frankly, again, it, the conversations that we had when it came to the last one that was further to the east was the aggregate company or Nature Wood, and most of us said it probably better not to be closer to the traffic sign telling you what off-ramp to take. So I think it's kind of the, the, the same argument here for this one, too.
Garrett?
Garrett?
I think we need to, the only question is now that they have another sign out there, we probably need to revisit the idea. Because didn't you just say that we just put another Caltrans, just stuck a sign in between there?
You know, I think that sign is to the west of Sunrise, not to the east of Sunrise. Because I know one has been added to the west.
She's saying that there's one in between these two signs?
Somewhere in the vicinity.
Well, community council owns a mile of property there.
But somewhere in the vicinity of the Buffalo Ditch.
What is that? Where's that?
That's the Buffalo Ditch is what flows out of Aerojet. It flows.
Next to Buffalo Water.
Under.
Is that on the Gold River side?
Under the freeway. And it's the ditch that separates Gold River from the industrial area and curves around.
So it's north of Highway 50?
But it comes from the south of Highway 50.
No, no, where's the sign? It's north of Highway 50?
No, yeah, no, the sign is on the south side.
Okay. You still haven't helped me at all understand where this is.
By Buffalo Ditch.
Give me another reference point that's within the city.
Get out your, get out your aerial and look at it.
Am I going to say that there's a Buffalo Ditch?
Coyote Pass.
The community council property is like a mile long and it's not on the community council property.
So is it east or west of?
It is not.
So it's not in between these two signs?
It's west, it's somewhere west, it's somewhere adjacent to the west end of the mine shaft property.
So it's west of this?
You guys are going to want to take a look at that.
So it's going to be before the taller sign that's being proposed?
So we should just make a little trip.
Right?
Got that? That's what I think. Go take a look at that. Second thing is I want to hear from my two. When I got brought on council, signs were bad and evil. So I know that we're only supposed to put them up in certain areas. And I thought we were going to put one next to KB Plaza or over in that area to try to incur it.
It's under construction. No, not the sign, but the.
That was a monument sign.
No, the.
The sign waiver?
No, the cell tower thing is under construction behind the grocery outlet. That's the thing we had the conversation about.
That wasn't a sign.
No, we had to talk about a sign, a monument sign that was going to show off a possible movie.
Garrett, 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 focus on the discussion, please.
Okay, so anyways, going forward, don't have a problem with the replacement of the sign for electronic sign. We may want to take a look at what Donald's talking about. But in the end, I defer to my people that ripped out 240 signs out of the city and left four. They are monsters when putting up signs. So if they're starting to feel like these are the right locations, I care a lot about the Cordova Community Council. So, but also know, like, I want to make sure we don't add to blight in the city. And I know they wouldn't do that. They would rather burn. And I doubt you guys are going to get rid of a tree. So you should, if it's near a tree, you should leave that alone. But besides that.
Okay, Siri, it's your turn.
Just, I wanted to confirm, is the applicant the Cordova Community Council?
Yes.
Okay. So I am for digital billboards in the first place. Given we have so many static billboards, we just drive past and don't even look at it. So in order to even catch our attention, we do need the digital billboards for one. I don't think, I'm going to look at it in this choice. The applicant is not asking us for money. By putting these signs, we're actually going to get revenue in, which is going to be for the betterment of the city, which is going to be better for the residents. This is on the freeway. And if we don't take it, either they might go to Sacramento County that might put it, or Folsom, or another city. They may or may not take it. But that's revenue that we, as a city, will be losing. So I am for these digital billboards. You know, they actually are pretty attractive on freeways. Sometimes trees and trees are pretty boring when you drive by, so. I like these billboards.
Siri. I'm sorry, I just, I just fell on the floor in a puddle.
Okay, I can fix it.
So, so just really quickly, that if, Linda, what you're saying about the Caltrans one.
Yeah.
It would be at the end of the very last furniture store before, before Folsom Boulevard goes right against the highway. So it's that triangle parking lot that ends, and then it would be right there. So it would be, because I do see where that creek is now.
Yeah.
It's hundreds of feet to the west of this. So it could end up being very close.
It's somewhere, it's somewhere between there and the.
There was a billboard there before, too, that they took down to build, to put one of these in. Darn close to it.
And the, and the. And the entrance to the mine shaft. David?
Well, I am in favor of this proposal, mainly because if we don't do this in Ranch Cordova, it certainly is an open market to be done in the county. And that revenue would not come to anyone's benefit here in Ranch Cordova. So this is a way to benefit our own community. Because the community council owns it, therefore it's basically in support of nonprofit activities here in Ranch Cordova. It also, so that's a benefit to us. It does, it's not a benefit that goes to some corporate structure, to the East Coast, or to advertising companies somewhere else. I think it's interesting, we've got, I think, all locals sitting here engaged in this. Shelley obviously lives in the city, as does Brian, who was born and raised here. And Dave, if I'm not mistaken, you're from Gold River and your business is in Gold River. So I don't really like the accusation that someone from out of town is coming in here and having us do this. That's not accurate. There's also some confusion, I think, about the tree. There's one tree involved in this. That tree has to be taken down because of the city's construction project. And an arborist has looked at it and said, this is not a viable tree, long-term, because it's growing literally between pavement of Folsom Boulevard and pavement of Highway 50. So it's, that was always a question, I mean, years ago when we upgraded Folsom Boulevard, there was a debate about whether or not we could save that tree. But with our overpass, it will, it will have to go. So that was the only tree that is being, to my knowledge, that's being affected by this. So Siri, you don't have to worry about losing, losing too many trees. Finally, you know, I think the big benefit here is that if the community council controls this, then they also control, in a way, what's on it. And we can actually use these to promote things that are happening. Community council will use the revenue to support a future mine shaft operation. So this gives them a base of revenue to support a facility that will benefit all of Ranch Cordova. So I view this as a win-win. And the alternative is, we don't win, we don't get the revenue, we don't get the views on the signs that we could use for our own benefit, and somebody else does, you know, Folsom does, county does, somebody else. On the height of the sign to the west, I think it is proposed at 70 right now, as opposed to 90. It came down from what they thought they needed before. It's also moved farther away from the bridge, is that, or from the overpass, is that right? So farther away from basically the ramp.
Is it on that slide that it said 90?
It's 70.
It's 70?
Yes.
Seven and a nine. It was, it was like 100 before, the original idea. They thought they'd have to be that high.
But it's going to be higher than the, is the bottom of it going to be higher than the off-ramp?
Yes, it will be. I believe the off-ramp will be at 43 feet.
There was a graphic of the, of what it would look like.
I guess my, my point there was that the point is to, is to advertise drivers on the highway, not people on a surface street.
Right.
Yeah. David, go ahead.
And we're already in a sign quarter here. There aren't a lot of signs left out there to take down. So the ratio is probably non-functional at this point. That happens after the, after the removal of 200 and, what was it, Linda, 53?
Well, but that was just the original ones, aside from that giant thing that came down at Zinfandel and what.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a very long battle and I have been in the sign wars. So it is ironic to be saying, now, these are good, but that's where I am. These are no good.
So, as Shelley knows, I really only support one sign. And it's not that I support it because, because unlike Siri, I'm not a fan of signs. And I still dislike the one at Naturewood every time we go by and especially when it's advertising guns. But I can support the one on the east. I can support its height and I can support its sign. I can't support the one on the west. I realize I may be in the minority. But I have also had the very unpleasant experience of having to permit billboards. And ironically, James mentioned Carl's Jr. It was for Carl's Jr. on Highway 65 at the, the first overpass at Five Star Boulevard. And Carl's Jr. wanted a sign that could be seen both northbound and southbound on Highway 65. And, you know, when you're in the sign business, as Dave Wells knows and I described for Shelley, you go out with a crane and you take a big piece of plywood and you fly it to make sure that it could be seen above and below the overpass and all this stuff. And their sign would have had to be 85 feet tall. And, and it would have been a total anomaly and incredibly unsightly. And, and I, I do not, I do not approve of the logic of running this sign up to a height where you can see it from both directions because we're trying to get over the overpass. David is absolutely right. The poor tree has to come out and everybody in, everybody on the east side of the county is going to scream bloody murder because we're losing that tree. And Edgar's back there nodding his head because he knows exactly what I'm talking about, but.
That's just because it's Edgar's fault, right?
No, 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 we'll blame it.
That's a joke, that's a joke.
We'll blame it on Albert. But, but no, I, I can't support but one of these signs and the one on the east side. So, so we've got, so in terms of those four issues that staff needed addressed, you probably have four people in favor of two signs.
I'm in favor of a shorter west side.
Right, so you have, so the next item is proposed maximum height of the signs. So you've got three people in favor of whatever's proposed. And you've got one person in favor of a shorter sign that could only be seen if you were traveling eastbound on Highway 50. There was a conversation about the.
The off-ramp would block it from.
Donald, there was a conversation about the area of the signs. And you had some comments about setting the easterly sign back 200 feet and making it larger. And I'm not sure, I forget whether you thought that was a good thing or not.
I generally don't think it's a good thing, but I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't vote no because of that. I wouldn't, I don't know. I, I just have the concern of it being seen from, from the, from the off-ramp.
No, the easterly sign. That's the one that's set back, I think.
No, it's the other one that's set back and is larger.
They're both set back. The western sign was moved 150 feet more than the original location, Mayor Budge, because of the staging area for the interchange.
So doesn't it, doesn't that put it?
Away from the interchange, a little bit more, 150 feet more.
Okay, but then in that case then, if it goes back further, isn't it behind, if you are westbound on the freeway, isn't it behind the proposed location, new location for the mine shaft? For the building?
Can you pull the slide for me?
Sure.
Oh, and for the commenter that said that, were we planning on purchasing the mine shaft site? We already did that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. The portion we needed, we bought. And that's been done and I don't know if they have their money, but it's going to happen.
We already have the right of way.
Right. Sure.
So let's discuss the westernly sign first off. We had pulled the westernly sign further west to accommodate construction staging area for the interchange and meeting with your public works staff. And so this is kind of a informational study session. And, you know, this project's still going to go through CEQA.
Sorry, just, do you have that exhibit I?
Yeah. This, this project's still going to go through CEQA and still go through the typical hearing process and come back to you for consideration. And so I would say that to address Councilmember Terry's comments regarding how far off the interchange and its potential visual impacts to traffic on the interchange with other directional signs, we can work with your staff to come up with some better visual simulations to give you a better viewpoint of what it'll look like to the motorists potentially as we get, as we move forward back to the eventual hearing on the CEQA document on the conditional use permits. And so, again, I would, I appreciate Vice Mayor Sanders' comment that the sign had came down from about 100 feet to 70 feet, which is 10 feet higher than your 60-foot standard, so it's not 70 feet or 90 feet. But in terms of its setback off of the Caltrans easement, and both signs, the east and the west, are back off that considerably. That's part of the rationale for that westernly sign being the 10 feet above your standard. The easterly sign at 60 feet is in conformity with your height standard, much like the Naturewood sign and the other sign to the west, it's off-site.
If you could get some visuals of, of what that's going to look like from the off-ramp? So if I was a car or a pedestrian on the west side of that thing.
I totally hear you.
How, how, how much of that am I really going to see? Or based on the way you angle it or something like that, if you make it hard to see from there in some way, I don't know.
Okay, so Brian, this.
Excuse me.
This.
Excuse me, I was still speaking. So my, my point with this is, if it's not a distraction to those drivers or an attention to those drivers, then I would probably back off of my concerns.
So just to respond and I'll address Mayor Budge's.
Brian, this, okay, this is a good exhibit, all right. But in order to get across the Folsom South Canal to begin with, this parkway is going to have to leave the ground elevation at a significant distance back from Highway 50. So it is probable that this, that this is going to be at whatever the proposed 43-foot elevation is for a considerable distance to the south away from the freeway.
Yes.
The other thing that's a problem with, that is a problem with this exhibit, it shows neither the existing location of the mine shaft nor the proposed location of the mine shaft.
Right.
And so again, if you, if you're, say, if you are at the eastern edge of this particular exhibit and you are westbound on Highway 50, then there's a point where you can't see that sign because it'll be behind the mine shaft.
So let me, let me say this. We are in the preliminary stages with our CEQA consultant, which is AECom. They've done a lot of work here in the city of Ranch Cordova. They are working on a draft initial study, looking at particular areas of study for an anticipated mitigated nick deck for the project. One of the areas that they've asked us about, and we can, we can work with your staff, with Plan Department, City Attorney's Office, and from what I'm gleaming from the comments this evening is the visual impacts for the interchange for traffic that's coming up from the south and for traffic that's going to be at the light going westbound or eastbound is of concern of how that's going to impact the visual distraction, potential visual distraction of drivers. That particular area of the CEQA document that you're going to have come before you, we can have some special focus paid to those visual impacts on this westernly sign with some video photo simulation and just some analysis from other signs in the region and how that interferes with motorists on a highway condition. So I would just, just remind you, we, you know, I think we wanted to get some good direction and feedback. Not trying to circumvent the discussion tonight, but you are going to have a CEQA document that's going to look at studying various impacts related to the signs. And the visual impacts of the highway can be an area of focus that we can provide.
Okay, well, you're right. Photo sims are going to be a good idea.
Yeah. And then the last point, I just wanted to clarify, Vice Mayor Sanders did a great job of that. The only removal of trees that are, that are occurring are, they're removing because of the interchange project the city's doing. This, it's going to, it happens to be that the signs will benefit from that. And so I just want to clarify that for the record as well, so.
Yes, we understand.
Okay.
Okay, so any further comments? We have direction to staff.
I would just say this is a, oh, sorry, this is a good graphic in the sense that this interchange is probably not what people think of commonly as an interchange. Because these ramps start so far back, if you look to the left, where the ramps start for exiting from Highway 50. And the bridge then has to fly over Folsom Boulevard, over the train tracks, over the, over the mine shaft property, over the canal, and then eventually land on the south side. And the sign itself is sort of on, it's on the property across Folsom Boulevard, across the railroad tracks, so it's a bit to the right.
And just to give context, too, I was involved with the previous landowner of the property when the, there were several designs of the interchange back in 2005. I'm really dating myself here, when your former city manager was the Public Works Director and we were working with Dim Jim Harris on various designs with Caltrans and the Gold River community on what the ultimate design of the interchange would look like and what impacts to the actual mine shaft building, the pillars, and even the development to the south and the Westboro. No, it's, it's, Westboro, specific planning area. So very familiar with advising the current landowner on how that's going to impact the property. You know, there's plans to move the building. And so, again, what I'm picking up from the discussion this evening is we'll make sure there's significant emphasis on the potential conflicts of the signs with vehicular traffic on the interchange in the mitigated nick deck. significant emphasis on the con, potential conflicts of the signs with vehicular traffic on the interchange, uh, in the mitigated nick deck, and, um, you know, as well as obviously, um, there's, there's other elements they're looking at in that document that's gonna be scrutinized and, and back before you for consideration in official capacity, hopefully sometime in the late May timeframe, so. But this was very helpful tonight.
Super, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And I think the conversations around where this Caltrans sign may be is relatively right, for the, at least the folks in the room, where that red dot is, it's relatively there, so that looks pretty far away from this one, as far as a concern of, that's a terrible place for them to have put one of those signs, but.
And they stuck it right on the freeway, I mean, it's really right on the freeway.
Where else were they gonna put it?
Yeah, but I mean, you know, because, because there's so little space in there, because as you pointed out, the Folsom Boulevard hits Highway fifty, and there's like six feet.
It's really fascinating how we've talked about CEQA and all these other things, and all of the public input that needs to come in to do this, and then the state can go put up cameras and signs wherever the hell they want, whenever they want, without telling anybody anything. You know, water towers can be built here by the feds without anyone knowing about it.
I was gonna bring up the water tower.
You know, things like that.
Isn't it an electric sign?
It's gonna be.
Yeah, of course.
It's not activated right now, but it's gonna be.
That's good.
I mean, nobody does anything that's not electric anymore.
It's one of those amber, it's one of the amber dot lights that say, you know, buckle up and, you know.
I'm sure it's gonna say, change required.
Yeah, change required on Highway fifty and that kinda stuff.
Okay, so thank you all, um, I think staff has direction. Okay, so we're gonna go on to twelve point four, Stacy, if you'll read that title, please.
Yes, discussion regarding expanding the twenty twenty-three council member appointments to regional boards, commissions and committees to include two appointments to the Cordova Recreation and Park District ad hoc committee.
Garrett and somebody else, I don't care who.
So, no, we have, um, we have an opportunity to meet again in a two-by-two with the Park District.
Yep.
And they send their chair and their vice chair, and so, um, David and I have volunteered to be the, um, the two who meet with them.
I, I would suggest for continuity that we don't do mayor, vice mayor, and then have that as one that rolls over every two years, or every year. That for continuity's sake, we should stop that, when I was mayor, I, I said it then, I said it mayor in seventeen, we should have the same two people that wanna work on projects, I, I know you disagree, but I'd like to finish my comment.
This is something that they haven't let us do in quite some time, so we're adhering to their rules.
I, I, I was on it before, so they, they haven't wanted to meet with us, their attorneys have advised them not to, and they couldn't agendize any, and everything had to be agendized, even though we wanted to have open, free conversations, because it's only two of us, right? So my, again, this is my suggestion, don't make it mayor, vice mayor, make it static members that can continue to work on things and not have a turnover every, every year.
I think Siri is short of appointments, and she's expressed interest in this before, so I would recommend Siri. And then.
Fine, if you, if you don't wanna do it.
If, and then one of us that has a lot of experience with park issues.
Okay, great, then, then, um.
Getting them, getting some of them elected.
We'll ask Siri, um, we'll ask Siri to join with me in, um.
Again, I would recommend Siri and, and Garrett.
Thank you, but I'm going to do this, because I'm the one who's been in the board.
I made a motion to appoint David, I'm sorry, Garrett and Siri.
Garrett, are, do you want to do this, or is that?
Would you like to second my motion?
Or is that too challenging?
Yeah, that's why I got two of them elected.
Is that?
Yeah.
So, um, Garrett, uh, so, given the fact that David's point is I am short on committees, um, if you were to take this, or Linda, or David, if one of you, two of you were to take it, is there something that I could take one of yours instead?
You're supposed to be at the Cable Commission.
Oh, that's interesting.
So you already took mine. Too much gonna do library.
Yeah, it's just one, that's the only one I had, so I literally have that one.
Library? What have we got, library?
I, I don't have library.
Siri is not on the library board, I thought she was, but she's not, I'm still the alternative.
Siri, and, and I wouldn't say this is a, a, a good trade for a commission, this is a two-by-two that will meet irregularly, to discuss matters between the two organizations, th- this isn't like, the two-by-twos that I'm on for the school district meet fairly irregularly anyways. If you're interested in another commission, we should bring that up as, as a conversation and see what, what makes sense. But again.
I would bring that now.
We've, we've had a very dysfunctional relationship with the Park District, and I think having two static members that wanna continue to work on this makes a heck of a lot of sense, um, especially considering the relationship that I, we, we seem to be moving into. And, and a lot of these, whether it's the county two-by-two, and it's mayor, vice mayor, and some of the other ones, I know the fire district was for a long time, and I had suggested to stop doing that, too. It just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to, to, to have those ones where every year, you're getting different people in the conversations with different priorities and different ideas and different beefs and problems. So again, I have a motion, I think I have a second, I'd like a vote.
And what is your motion?
I think I've said it three times now.
We'll do it again, please.
Garrett and Siri.
All right, you have a motion and a second, please call the roll, Stacy.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sanders.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
No, thank you. All right, we will ask for council request for future agenda items.
How do we, how do we give keys?
Recording in progress.
Like keys of the city, is that done in here, or do I just talk to you guys about that?
You just talk to Stacy about it.
Okay.
All right, we're going to adjourn to closed session, Siri, will you, uh,
I will.
Stacy, will you read the, um, the request, Steve?
The conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, four, six, nine, D two. Two cases, one relating to notice and alleged default under development agreement and sixty-day period to cure Logistics Center project at corner of North Mather Boulevard and Bear Hollow Drive from Arthur Coon, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and a second relating to an oral threat of litigation from representatives of Elliot Holmes that the potential city action on the Logistics Center project will result in litigation by Elliot Holmes against the city relating to certain of its Stone Creek properties.
And we are adjourning in the memory of Marjorie Bolton and Ronnie Rahm. We will be back for a report out of closed session.